Get going with the procedure. Are all the other commissioners here? I saw Damian, I see Sean, Rich is here, Lisa, Jack, Moira. Moira here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So. Let me. I'm gonna try to, I had to get on my iPad because my laptop, something happened to it. So I'm gonna try to just move this around a little bit. And stand it up because I think it works better that way. I'm working with a big glass divider in my conference room. Okay. Okay, so. Let me just. Is the board ready to go? Because I'll just start the hearing and go through the procedure and the process.
I think we're set.
Okay, so. What we have tonight before the board is a conditional use application. The applicant is the trustees of the Dorance Hamilton revocable agreement of trust. George Brosman is here representing the applicant. The applicant, the application proposes the construction of townhomes. In the, this is the R4 zoning district of the township. And the applicant's proposing a density modification development. The density modification development is a type of use that's permitted in most of the residential zoning districts of the township. You can find the, the ordinance provisions are found at 280 hyphen 90 of the township zoning ordinance. And they're the criteria that Mr. Brosman and the applicant are required to submit testimony and evidence on in order to meet those criteria in the zoning ordinance. This is not a land development review. This is a zoning permit, zoning use hearing. So to some extent, it'll overlap into land development issues. This is just the first step in this project for it to move forward. The applicant, applicant has the burden of proof, has to submit, call witnesses and submit testimony and evidence. If this application is approved, then the next step would be the land development process which would go in front of the township planning commission and ultimately the board of commissioners. So the board of commissioners, and I've seen some emails, are acting in their quasi judicial judicial capacity, sort of like judges without the robes. And the the wigs, the white wigs. So they are like a zoning hearing board. And they're gonna hear test sworn testimony and evidence. And then they'll have to make a decision. Once the hearing or the testimony and evidences and the board has then 45 days to render a written decision. Tonight is the first hearing. I anticipate we'll have more than one hearing in this application, but I may be wrong. I think there's enough information that's been submitted and I believe the applicant has at least four or five witnesses. That'll take at least one more night after tonight. So the conditional use is sort of like a special exception that would go to a zoning hearing board. It's considered a permitted use that has to go through additional scrutiny because of the provisions that permitted in a zoning ordinance. So that's the conditional use part of this. The next part I wanted to just address is in any type of zoning proceeding like this, you have an applicant. And we have the applicant here tonight represented by counsel. The township's always a party to any kind of zoning hearing board application, whether it's in front of a zoning hearing board or in this instance, a conditional use. But the municipality's planning code, which governs zoning hearings, also permits interested residents, adjacent residents who can also participate as a party. Now, what that means is, and I'm gonna ask, start thinking about this, the folks that are on this, that are residents, what it means to become a party. To become a party or intervene as a party in a zoning hearing means that as each witness is called by Mr. Brosman, you will have the opportunity to cross-examine that witness and ask that witness questions about his or her testimony. Not about something else, just the testimony. You will also be able, if you choose, if you become a party, to present your own witnesses. To present your own engineers, to do whatever you position you want to take to put on your own testimony. And Mr. Brosman would get to cross-examine your witnesses. You can testify yourself as a party on factual issues. So that's, in terms of becoming a party, that's the first part of it. The other part is if you disagree as a party to a zoning hearing, if you disagree with the decision, you have the right to file an appeal. If you don't become a party at this level, you lose any right to file an appeal down the road if you disagree with whatever the decision is. So that's what it means to become party status. That's one way to participate in this hearing. The other way that you can participate is under public comment. There will be public comment at the end of all the testimony, which means there probably won't be any public comment tonight because I do not believe we're gonna finish the testimony tonight. So these are sort of like mini court proceedings. The strict rules of evidence don't apply. But, you know, what we'd like to do is to stick to the facts. There is an opportunity for opinions at the end of all the testimony when there'll be a public comment period. But that will likely be probably the next time we meet on this application. The testimony that'll be presented tonight, as I said, the applicant has a burden of proof. Mr. Brosman will call witnesses. One at a time, they will be sworn in by our court reporter. And, and we'll proceed in that fashion, who asks questions. Anybody that is a party will have the right to ask questions. I will then ask the board, the individual commissioners, if any of them have questions of the witness. And we'll go through each witness in that fashion. So let me just start with parties. Is there anyone here? And I'm gonna ask you if you, if you're interested in intervening as a party. I will need your name and your address. And the court reporter will take it down also, but I'd like to write it down as we go. So let me start with that. If there's anybody that wants to become a party, I'd ask that you raise your hand. And then Ian, who is on this, will unmute each of the individuals, one at a time. And as you state your name and your address, just tell us briefly how close you live to the property. Okay? So Ian, if you could start with anybody that has their hands raised, if you can unmute them so that we can get that information into the record. I see Mr.
Schuda. Good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, John, appreciate this. Again, the name is Joe Schuda, S-C-H-U-D-A.
Okay, and address?
14 Forest, F-O-R-R-E-S-T Lane.
Okay.
And we are immediately adjacent to the Hamilton estate and number 18 Forest Lane, which is also part of the development.
Okay.
Our property is right at the border.
Okay. And you're requesting party status, Mr. Schuda?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, do you have any objections to Mr. Schuda becoming a party?
I don't object to Mr. Schuda being a party. Could I ask however? Mr. Schuda, do you live in Radnor Township or it's a different township?
We are Radnor Township. We are the first or last house in Radnor, how you would like to define it. We're right on the county line and the township line.
Thank you.
So your, your post, your post office box is Wayne, sir?
Yes, sir, 19087-3119.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Ian, if you can unmute. Is that Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I'm Gloria Johnston, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N. And my husband and I, Alfred James, he goes by Jim, live at 17 Grant Lane. We are Radnor resident. We've lived in this house over 30 years. And my property, our property looks out on the very densely population of trees and wildlife at the, at the back end of the Hamilton property. I look directly across to the garage.
Okay, and you have a Wayne mailing address also, Ms. Johnson?
Wayne residence, 19087.
Okay, Mr. Brosman, any objection to the Johnstons?
No objections to the Johnstons.
Okay. Next.
It's Steve Sherry, hand raised. He should be unmuted.
Steve Sherry, we are 9 Grant Lane, Lane 19087. Our property adjoins the Hamilton estate. We share a common border. We've lived in our house for 23 years. Very interested in this process to ensure that it's representative of the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, any objection to Mr. Mrs. Sherry?
I have no objection. I will note it was kind of hard to hear you, Mr. Sherry.
Is there, is there anything you need repeated?
No.
Okay, basically just gave my address and we are adjoined to the property.
Okay. Anyone else? I see another hand raised.
Gregory, hand raised. I think he should be unmuted as well.
Yes, my name is Gregory Zary. I live at 6 Forest Lane. My last name is spelled S as in Sam, Z as in zebra, A-R-Y. I'm in Wayne, 19087. I am about 200, 250 feet from the property at 18 Forest Lane.
And you're a Radnor Township resident, sir?
I am a Tridifferent Township resident.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Brosman, any objection to Mr. Sherry?
Very good.
Yes or no?
I don't object.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
Right, so this is Anajit Serene. My name, I think, is on the screen in terms of the spelling. I live at, on 205 Stratford. So we're right across the street from the Hamilton estate near, near Eagle. And we are also on the other side of the secondary property. That's just behind our backyard.
Just spell your name for me anyway, please.
It's A-N-U-J-E-E-T. Last name is Serene, S-A-R-E-E-N.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, any objection to Mr. Serene?
No objection. I would like to know for the record, the secondary property that was referenced is not the subject of this application.
Okay. Mr. Serene, you, you have a Wayne mailing address? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Yes, this is Jennifer Sarhadi, S-A-R-H-A-D-D-I. Jennifer and Richard Sarhadi, we reside at 337 Eagle Road. The Hamilton property is around the corner from us as our property is near the Eagle and Stratford corner. And as Anajit Serene said, we also, although I understand the second property is not an issue this evening, the second property is likewise visible to us from our backyard.
Okay, and are you a Radnor Township resident?
Yes.
And you have a Wayne mailing address, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Brosman, any objection to the Sarhaddys?
No objection.
Okay, anyone else?
Ted Heimel.
Me. Hello, happy holidays, everyone. Ted Heimel, I live in between the Schutas and Greg Cesari, Tridifferent resident, 11 Forest Lane. I'm a good baseball throw away from the Hamilton project.
Okay, and your mailing address, is it Wayne?
11, 11 Forest Lane, Wayne. I have to apologize, I was eating chocolates. It is that time of year, so I tried to do my best.
Okay, well, we, we won't penalize you for that.
Trying to lighten the mood. Wow, everybody's serious.
Anyone else?
Mr. Rice, could I ask, Mr. Heimel, are you at Tridifferent or Radnor resident?
Yeah, as I mentioned, Tridifferent. No worries.
I don't object.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, hi, this is Caitlin O'Sullivan. I live at 201 Stratford Avenue, we're in Radnor. And just like the Sarhaddys and Serenes, we're across the street from the property.
And spell your first name.
Caitlin, K-A-I-T-L-I-N. Last name is O'Sullivan.
Mr. Brosman, any objection?
No objection.
Done, anyone else?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is, my name is Lisa Delizia. That's D as in dog, E-L-I-Z, like zebra, I-A, Delizia. And we live on West Avenue, W-E-S-T, number 337.
Is that in Wayne?
Yes.
Okay, and how close do you live to the property?
I am the second house in from Eagle Road, so that would be not the, not the flashing red light, but the next stop sign down. If you made a right on west, I'm the second house in.
Brosman, Mr. Brosman, any objection to Ms. Delizia?
Yes, I object. I think that's pretty far away to have a direct impact from this property. So I would object to party status being granted.
Ms. Delizia, about how far are you from the property?
I would say maybe 200 yards, not even. And my concern is the additional traffic that would be incurred on my street just as a result of all the the new residents. Being that if they wanted to get to the center of Wayne, they would take West Avenue, as does everyone else. So we don't have sidewalks, we don't have speed bumps, we have a speed limit of 25. And our traffic calming initiative actually approved us for speed bumps based on the pure volume of cars and the speeds at which they drive down our road. So I think that someone from our road should be, should be heard on the matter.
Okay, Mr. Brosman has an objection. There are some rules in zoning cases involving standing. You don't, you don't get standing and are able to become a party just because you live in the township. Are you within a quarter of a mile of this property?
Yes.
Okay. Then, Mr. Brosman, your objection's overruled. Ms. Delizia is in. Anyone else? You have to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth Turunian. I live at 404 West Avenue. I'm about the same distance as Lisa. But I'm on the other side of West Avenue, so that it would be the traffic near my home, not going directly in front of my home. I'm the first house on West Avenue.
Okay, and could you spell your last name, please?
Absolutely, it's T-O-R-U-N-I-A-N.
Okay, Mr. Brosman, do you have an objection for Ms. Turunian?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you on the part of West Avenue that is a dead end or a cul-de-sac?
Yes, I am.
I would object to standing on the, it's pretty far away. And unlike the prior speaker, that road is not a through road and wouldn't be likely to see traffic from this development.
But it would impact any time that I would want to walk to downtown Wayne because of the additional traffic. Also trying to cross the street on Eagle Road would be difficult. So it's not that it wouldn't impact me daily, because it would.
Okay, I, Ms. Turunian, are you about how far from the property? Quarter mile, half mile, do you know?
I think it's less than a quarter mile because I'm on West Avenue. So like right near the stop sign that's at West Avenue from the property.
Okay. Then I, Mr. Brosman, if she's that close, your objection's overruled. And Ms. Turunian's in as a party. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Can I say something?
If you want to become a party, you can.
Okay, so I live across the street from Lisa.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Who's speaking, I have a couple people lighting up.
Let's.
Yes.
Ian, I see Cheryl on the screen who started to talk. So let's have that person speak with name and address. If you're interested in becoming a party, if not, then we're gonna, we have to move on. Go ahead.
I'm Cheryl Belair, I'm at 334 West Avenue.
And spell your name.
C-H-E-R-Y-L, last name Belair, B-E-L-L-A-I-R-E. And I moved here about eight years ago. And we already had traffic, somebody ran over the speed sign, somebody else hit the telephone pole across the street from me. We, yeah, we have cut through traffic to Wawa constantly.
Ms. Belair, I need to know your address, give me your address.
Oh, I, 334 West.
Okay.
I'm also a runner, I also have young kids. We've had a dog hit on our street, we've had a telephone hit, we've had a, a speed sign run over. And it's only getting worse. So in any additional traffic, the problem is you cannot really go out Stratford and make a left very easily. So even if they're not going to the Wawa or center of town, they come through our way because that's the only way they can get to a light and make a left-hand turn on Lancaster Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brosman, any objection?
Yes, I object similar grounds as for the others that I objected to.
Okay, and that objection's overruled. Ms. Belair, you're in as a party. Okay, anyone else?
I see Dave Satterfield.
Yes, this is Dave Satterfield, it's S-A-T-T-E-R-F-I-E-L-D. I live at 207 Stratford Avenue. And so our house is directly across the street from where the development would be. And we've been here for almost four years.
Mr. Brosman, any objection to Mr. Satterfield?
No objection.
Okay, Mr. Satterfield, you're in. Okay, I see Mary Ann Mahoney's hand raised.
Yes, I hope you can hear me. I live at 5 Grant Lane. The front of our house is on Stratford Avenue. We're the first house on Grant Lane. And we are directly connected to this whatever, whatever is going on, we are right in the epicenter. So thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brosman, any objection?
No objection, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I see Bryn with their hand raised.
Hi, this is Bryn.
This is Jack.
Bryn Smythe, Jack Rubin, we live at 5 Pedro. We could see the Hamilton house.
You need to slow down and state one name at a time and slowly your address.
Sure, Jack Rubin, R-E-U-B-E-N. Bryn Smythe, S-N-Y-T-H-E, 5 Pedro.
Thank you.
And we could see the Hamilton house from our house. So we're within, within 100 yards.
And sir, what was your last name again, Jack?
Rubin, R-E-U-B-E-N.
Okay. And are you a Radnor Township resident?
No, we're T-E.
Okay. But a Wayne mailing address?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
I have no objection, Mr. Rice.
Sorry, George. Okay. I see another hand raised. Arthur Hucklebridge. Go ahead.
I'm Bev Hucklebridge, also known as Sue Hucklebridge. My family has owned 321 Eagle Road for over 50 years. Right now, we don't live there because we're finishing up where we are now, but plan to retire in Wayne.
Spell the name of your street, please.
Eagle Road, 321 Eagle Road.
Thank you.
And I'm just very concerned about traffic and water problems when we're planning on moving there soon, hopefully.
And are you a Radnor Township resident?
The house is in Radnor Township, we live out of state.
Right, okay. Mr. Brosman, any objection?
No objection.
Okay, anyone else? Who, okay, I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Let me ask one other question. Is there, if there's anyone that.
John, Taryn, Neil just raised their hand.
Okay.
Sorry, I was having a hard time getting the button on my cellphone. My name's Taryn Neal. I live at 311 Eagle Road, that's in Wayne. I'm a Radnor resident. It's the corner of Eagle Road and West Avenue, so I'm only about five houses away from the Hamilton development.
Okay, can you spell your last name, please?
N is a Nancy, E-A-L.
If there's anyone else. Mr. Brosman, I'm sorry, any objection?
Could I ask, you mentioned you're on the corner of west, is that the west that goes through to downtown Wayne or the west that's the dead end?
I literally sit, my house sits in the middle of the intersection, so my driveway is on the dead end, but the rest of my house is sitting on Eagle Road.
I would object to standing.
My house will have the most traffic that will come by it since everyone will continue to blow through the stop sign like they are doing today. Only we will have more traffic. So I'm definitely impacted by this.
And Ms. Neal, do you live within a quarter mile of the property?
Yes, less than.
Okay, the objection's overruled, Ms. Neal's in. Anyone else? Ian, do you see anyone else? I don't see anyone else.
I'm not seeing anyone, John.
Just for anyone else that is on this call, if you're unable to raise your hand and you want to participate as a party, please send me an email. jrice, R-I-C-E, at grimmlaw.com, G-R-I-M-L-A-W dot com. If you're unable to use that function for whatever reason. And then we can. And then we can address that later on. So just for the, the parties, all 13 of you, Mr. Brosman's going to call witnesses, one by one. You will each have the opportunity to ask questions one time. And then we'll move on to, you know, the other parties. And then when the parties are done and Mr. Brosman's done with his witness, the committ, commissioners will each have a chance to ask questions. So are there any questions from anyone about the procedure before we, we have Mr. Brosman begin? And if so, raise your hand and Ian won you. I don't see any, okay. Okay, so Mr. Brosman, you're ready to proceed with your first witness?
Yes, Mr. Rice, I have some opening comments I'd like to make. And then I, I have, my first witness would be Rob Lambert.
Okay. Well, let's get Mr. Lambert sworn in first, and then you can make your opening comments and then call him, okay? Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert needs to be unmuted. Norma, you want to do the...
Yes, I'm looking for him. Mr. Lambert, wherever you are, if you'll raise your right hand.
Raise.
There we go. You do solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give. It will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. State your full name and spell first and last.
Rob Lambert, R-O-B Lambert, L-A-N-B-E-R-T.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brosman, proceed on.
Good evening. For the record, my name is George Brosman. I represent the trustees of the Dorance Hamilton 315, 1996 revocable agreement of trust. The owners of the properties that is the subject of this application for conditional use. These properties have addresses currently of 208, 228 Stratford Avenue and 18 Forest Lane. On behalf of the owners of the properties, we filed a conditional use application and a related preliminary land development plan, which plan is not the subject of tonight's proceedings. Only the conditional use application is. We filed this application for the redevelopment of these properties into a planned community, which if approved would consist of 41 townhome units, common open space and related improvements, including a comprehensive stormwater management system. We're here this evening to present the conditional use application. I wanted to note that prior to even filing these applications for this project, the applicant conducted a series of community meetings to discuss the project. These meetings took place on January 30, 2020, March 11, 2020, which meeting was devoted solely to stormwater management issues. And again, on July 22, 2020, which by this time, we were in the grips of COVID-19, and that was a Zoom meeting. All of these meetings were well attended. Commissioner Larkin helped notify many of the residents of Radnor and the Tridifferent Township in the area about these meetings. You'll hear testimony that the applicant made some changes to the plans as a result of those meetings, particularly having to do with stormwater management enhancements. We do have a series of exhibits that we'll be presenting during the hearing. Some of those will focus on others. I'll just place into the record. I had, I believe Mr. Panzak, who is a later witness, is going to be our designated screen chair. So if I could ask him to have those privileges, that would be helpful. Burn, if you could put up the exhibits. So for the record, we won't go into detail about this. Exhibit A1 is a copy of the application we filed for conditional use. At exhibit A2, A through E, there are supplemental materials that accompanied the conditional use application required by the ordinance as part of a conditional use. Again, I won't go into those at this point. I will note that the redacted deeds for the subject properties that show that my clients own the properties and do have standing to make these applications can be found within the exhibit A1, the conditional use application that we filed. The properties, as Mr. Rice noted, are in the R4 residential district. They have a combined lot area of over 7.5 acres. They presently contain a series of dwelling units and related improvements. The tract has frontage on Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue. It has a lengthy boundary line.
Excuse me, you're fading out. You're fading out.
I'm closer. The tract has a lengthy boundary line along the rear of the Eagle Village Shops, which is relatively large shopping center that fronts on Lancaster Avenue and Eagle Road. A parcel at 18 Forest Lane that is included in this proposal, of course, has frontage on Forest Lane. In the R4 district, development on lots with a minimum of 7,000 square feet is permitted. In addition, as Mr. Rice noted, on lands that are zoned R4, as this is, tracts of five acres or more. Another option is permitted for residential development in the township code. That is called density modification. Density modification is permitted by conditional use. It provides for a more flexible design approach than conventional development would, would provide. This option, however, also requires provision of common open space and other protections for the neighborhood, like perimeter buffers around the development, which are not required for conventional development. Density modification has been a tool that has been successfully used in the township for decades, has resulted in numerous attractive developments that are enjoyed by many residents of the township. Mr. Lambert has been sworn in as our first witness, so I would like to call him now. If we complete his testimony, I do have some other witnesses. Mr. Panzak, if you could go to exhibit A3, please. Mr. Lambert, are you with me?
Yes, I am here.
Rob, I've placed, Mr. Panzak is placed on the screen, exhibit A3. Is this a copy of a brief description of your professional experience and background?
Yes, it is.
And are you a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
I am.
I would like to offer Mr. Lambert as an expert in civil engineering and land development.
Okay. Do any of the parties have any questions about Mr. Lambert's qualifications? If so, please raise your hand. Ian, is there anyone that has questions about Mr. Lambert's qualifications?
John, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, Mr. Lambert has done many plans in Radnor Township, so I can attest to his qualifications to testify. And he will be accepted. Mr. Brosman, you said in what field? Civil engineering?
Yes, civil engineering.
Okay, he'll be accepted then as a witness and civil, expert witness in civil engineering.
John, can I request that the exhibits are enlarged for easier...
I need a name.
Maura Mulroney, Commissioner Mulroney.
And if anyone that speaks, if you would please identify yourself, because there are so many people and I don't have a screen tile of everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bros.
Shall I move on?
Yes, please.
Rob, are you generally familiar with the properties that are the subject of this application and the general area?
Yes, I am.
And is your firm the civil engineering firm for this project?
Yes.
Did your firm prepare a set of plans for this project?
Yes, in concert with Byrne Panzak, who's controlling the slides, of Glocken Thomas Panzak, we prepared the plan set that's in exhibit A4.
And you mentioned exhibit A4. Is this the set of conditional use and land development plans that was initially submitted to the township along with the conditional use application?
Yes, it is.
And we'll come back to some of these plans later. I'm just noting this for the record. Mr. Lambert, after we submitted the application in September, did you receive copies of the reviews for the conditional use application from the township engineering consultants?
Yes, we did. There's exhibit A5, which is a review letter from Gannett Fleming. And exhibit A6, which is a review letter from Gilmore and Associates.
And based on those reviews, did you prepare a revision to the proposed site plan?
Yes, we prepared exhibit A7, which was a revision to the, the plan. In the Gilmore review letter, there was one comment about a dead end area. And we revised that plan to eliminate the, the dead end area.
And we can go into that in greater detail when we talk about the plan. So for this conditional use application, we'll be proceeding with this plan, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And at the appropriate time, the other sheets in the plan set would be revised to be consistent with this revision as future submissions are made?
Yes.
I'd like to turn to the location of the properties and the existing conditions. Mr. Panzak, could we have exhibit A8, please? Drawing your attention to exhibit A8, Rob, this is an exhibit showing the zoning of the subject property and the surrounding areas in both Radnor and Tridifferent Townships. Could you confirm the zoning of the property and the surrounding area?
Yeah, so on exhibit A8, it's prepared by Glocken Thomas Panzak. On the, there's a line going down the, roughly to, a little bit left of center. That is a, a long solid line and two small dashes. That's actually the municipal boundary line as represented on this. The area to the left of that is Tridifferent Township. The area to the right of that is Radnor Township. The subject property is highlighted or outlined in yellow on this plan. And that is the green color, which represents the R4 zoning district in Radnor Township.
And this exhibit A8, does it show some other zoning districts around the property besides residential?
Yeah, so going from kind of a lower left to upper right is Lancaster Avenue. It arcs a little bit as you go. And so I'm going to use to the top of the page for, for description purposes, being north, the bottom of the page, south. So going to the bottom of the page or south is the Eagle Village Shopping Center. And that is zoned C2. And that has the, a long adjacent border with the subject property. To the right, or what we'll call east for now, is, of the subject property is Eagle Road. And on the opposite side of Eagle Road is the office complex. And out toward Lancaster Avenue is the Lancaster County Farmer's Market. That was, I believe that was PB zoning district there. And then going to the north of that site is the Stratford Office Complex on the opposite side of Stratford Avenue, which is, I believe that was a CO district for the Stratford Avenue. And so then directly on the opposite side of Stratford Avenue continues the, from the subject site, continues the R4 district. And then to the left or west, you would get into Tridifferent Township, which has a residential zoning district on the opposite side of that line, before getting out to Old Eagle School Road on the opposite side.
Thank you. And turning to exhibit A9, please. Mr. Lambert, is this a copy of the existing conditions plan sheet from your plan set?
Yes, it is.
And using this, would you describe the existing conditions on the tract?
Yeah, so this plan, again, will use the same orientation as, as the previous plan. And so the top of the page we're going to refer to is north, although technically it would be northeast. On the top of this page or north is Stratford Avenue, which goes from left to right on top of the page. On the right-hand side is Eagle Road, which goes from top to bottom. To the bottom of the page from this would be the Eagle Village Shopping Center is to the bottom. And on the bottom left-hand corner is Forest Lane and Fairfield Lane, which has one piece, one, one property that fronts on Forest Lane. The proposal, you know, what can be seen on the site, onto the left, I'm sorry, I was going around there. To the left was Grant Lane, just off to the page on the left-hand side. The property, it's a little bit hard to see on this image, at least on my screen. The, the tan areas are existing buildings on the subject property. The gray is existing pavement and the, you know, blue is a swimming pool. So you can see, you know, there is a fair amount of development and existing on the subject property. And Byrne's moving it, so I'll wait a second. And the current property consists of, of several parcels that we proposed to merge as part of this application.
Mr. Lambert, are there any sidewalks along Eagle or Stratford Road on the frontages of these properties?
Now, this property was developed a long time ago, and there are no sidewalks on either frontage. There are no stormwater management controls throughout the site. There's really even no, no collection or conveyance, or minimal collection and conveyance of stormwater on the site. So it just has a lot of uncontrolled impervious. There are several driveways, one on Eagle, and there are three on Stratford, although one is lightly used.
And is the property currently served by Public Water and Public Sanitary Sewer Service?
Yes, the property is served by both Public Water and Public Sewer.
Does the property contain sensitive natural environmental features such as watercourses, streams, floodplains, or steep slopes?
It, it does not, no.
We could move to A10, please. You might want to blow this up a little. Rob, referring to exhibit A10, can you describe the, the location of the properties and surrounding land uses? Or I think you did that before. Let me state this another way. Does this plan in another format, satellite image, show the surrounding land uses similar to what you described when you went over the zoning map exhibit?
Yes, this was a plan prepared by Glocken Thomas Panzak that shows an aerial photograph of the surrounding area. They've added some labels to it, and they've inset the proposed plan on that aerial. Again, it's the same orientation as the zoning exhibit with Stratford Avenue going left to right across the page. Eagle is going from top to bottom, and Lancaster Avenue below goes from the lower left to the upper right.
Can I, may I ask a question?
I'm sorry, speaking.
Commissioner Lisa Borowski.
Thank you.
I just want to know, these exhibits, will we be provided those exhibits after this testimony? I noticed that some of these are not in the, the packet of information that we were provided.
Mr. Bros, are the, are these, were these part of the application that was filed?
The application, Mr. Rice, was A1 and A2.
Okay.
Many of these exhibits were used at the community meetings, but they were not part of our application. But to answer the commissioner's question, we would provide these to you, of course.
Yeah, let me, let me just make sure so everybody understands. The, the application came in with some information, and Mr. Brosman's presenting additional plans tonight for the first time. So anything that gets marked tonight in terms of exhibits, there'll be copies available at the township. So anything that gets marked tonight in terms of exhibits, there'll be copies available at the township building. If it can be sent electronically, we'll do that also. So that's, Commissioner Borowski, absolutely, all of this has got to be made available. Usually if you have a live meeting, it's, you have a paper copy in your hand, but, you know, we don't have it tonight. So anyway, it'll all be available.
Understood. Thank you.
One more procedural question from Commissioner Booker. What is the extent of changes that are permitted for this hearing versus what was submitted for the application? Is it only minor? Or could there be material differences in these materials that were materially different from what was submitted with the application?
Yeah, they can be changed, Commissioner Booker. The application, you know, gets filed and then starts the process. But the plans like this tend to get revised over time, especially after hearings. So there's no rule about materiality versus de minimis. What's in front of you is what is being presented tonight. This is the record. Okay, Mr. Brosman?
Shall I proceed?
Yes, please.
Could we have Exhibit A11, please? So Mr. Lambert, referring to Exhibit A11, is this the, an illustrative version of the proposed site plan that we had at Exhibit A7?
Yes, this is an illustrative plan, and it's an enlargement, just really an enlarged area of Exhibit A10.
And on this plan, the proposed landscaping plan is also included, correct?
Yes.
And so everybody knows the specifics of the landscaping plan will be addressed by another witness, Mr. Panzak, who's a registered landscape architect. Rob, referring to this plan, would you describe the proposed site plan, please?
Yeah, so Exhibit A11, again, Strafford Avenue is left to right at the top of the page. Eagle Road is top to bottom on the right-hand side. This plan proposes 41 townhouse units. We have a internal private road that'll be part of a homeowners association. And then this plan also shows, and it's a little bit difficult to see on this exhibit, but extensive stormwater management facilities that we've included as part of the proposed plan. And so in the area where it says community green, there's a large underground, two underground stormwater systems in that area, which is between, I guess, Unit 21 and 35. There's a green there, and that's where we have two systems. And then going toward the lower left from that community green, there's a, between Units 25 and 26, there is an underground stormwater management system going to the bottom right by Unit Number 1. Between Unit Number 1 and 41, there's an additional underground stormwater management system. And then going back to the left side is behind Units 12 through 15, there's an additional stormwater management system in that location. And then after meeting with neighbors, we have actually added a system on the Forest Lane parcel. So at the corner of Forest Lane and Fairfield, that property was just going to be left vacant. But as in response to some neighbor concerns, we've added a stormwater facility on that parcel.
This is Richard Sarhadi. Are we able to ask questions during this time?
No, you're not.
Okay, thank you.
Not until he's done, and then once he's done, all the parties can, I'll just call each name out as you enter your appearance.
And then, got it, thank you. Got it. Thank you very much.
And one thing this plan does do is it adds a sidewalk from, all the way along our frontage on Eagle and Strafford. And so there'll be a public sidewalk out on both Eagle and Strafford Roads. We have an internal sidewalk all the way along the internal road. And then there is a pedestrian connection roughly in the center-right of center along the Eagle Village Shopping Center, that we have a pedestrian connection connecting to the Eagle Village Shopping Center.
And Rob, could you speak about the common open space?
Yeah, so this property has common open space as part of the density modification. So we have the community green in the center, so that was between Units 21 and 35, going down to Units 26 through 29 is a community green. And so that makes up a portion of our open space. And within that area, I'd note, and Mr. Panzak will talk about this more, is, you know, we've done, really worked on the design to preserve some of the tree mashing in that area and the mature trees, and so we have that area as a common open, a common green area. And then in the lower left of the site, we have an additional common green area where the recharge bed is, and on the sides of Units 12 and 15 is another area of that common area. Community green.
And Rob, you highlighted stormwater, and I wanted you to do that because it was such a concern in our community meetings. So thank you. But for the record, will stormwater, the details of it, be addressed during the land development process? And again, during the NPDES permitting process?
Yes, they'll be more fully reviewed during land development permit and our permitting process.
For purposes of the conditional use, in your professional opinion, will it be feasible to install these systems?
Yes, I don't see any issue installing the systems. We've done permeability tests to show that they will function according to the design.
And have these systems been designed to meet or exceed applicable stormwater regulations?
Yes, they exceed the township stormwater regulations.
And you did submit a stormwater report along with the application, which is at Exhibit A2B. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
I would like to move on. That was the general overview of the plan. Now, I would like to review with you, Rob, the specific conditional use standards for density modification development in the R4 district, and how the proposed plans comply with those requirements, okay?
Yeah.
I'm going to refer to a series of ordinance provisions. So I'm going to start out with Code Section 28092A4. This is the applicability and density provision for density modification in the R4 district. Can you explain how the proposed plan meets these standards?
Yeah, so in the R4 district, the, a tract area, minimum of five acres, is required for applicability of the density modification. And this property is significantly larger than that. It's 7.7 acres. So we've exceeded that minimum requirement, and then it provides for a density. And the density is permitted at five and a half dwelling units per acre, which would, if you do the math, it comes out to be about 42 units. Only 41 units are provide, are proposed, and so we comply with the density requirement. And then there are some setback requirements with this plan complies with.
And moving on to another code provision, Section 28093 contains the use regulations for density modification in the R4 district. Are townhomes a permitted use under density modification in the R4 district?
Yes, they are permitted.
And 29093B has requirements for townhome groupings, distances and things like that between buildings. Do the proposed plans comply with these requirements?
Yes, they do.
Code Section 28093C also has provisions for what makes a townhouse. It has to have at least two floors. It has to be attached to one or more or other townhomes. Do the plans meet these requirements?
Yes, they do.
I'd like to move on to the common open space and residential buffering requirements. Let's start with the common open space requirements, if we could. Do the proposed plans provide at least 15% of the tract area's common open space as required by Code Section 28091A?
Yes, we described the areas in the earlier testimony, but it exceeds 15%, of the tract area.
And in your opinion, is the proposed common open space appropriate and suitable for the open space purposes?
Yes, the areas provide views and open usage of the property.
They don't have constraints that prevent you from utilizing them?
No, they have open access. You're able to, the community members will be able to access all of these areas through the property. There's really no restrictions on, you know, there are no features that would preclude the open enjoyment of those properties, of those areas.
And was the common open space designed to also, in addition to providing for access and views, was the common open space designed to help enhance and preserve some of the natural features, which are primarily trees?
Yes, that's why I mentioned describing the community green area, where a lot of care was taken in the grading and the design of that to preserve the tree mashing, especially along Strafford Avenue, to keep the existing views along there the same.
And are any proposed structures permitted in the common open space?
There are structures that are permitted. We're not proposing any structures within the open space at this time.
And does the common open space contain any streets, off-street parking areas, or areas set aside for public facilities?
No.
What would be the proposed ownership and maintenance of the proposed common open space?
That'll be part of the planned community or the homeowners association.
And they would be responsible for the proper maintenance of that?
Yes.
I will note for the record that at A2D, it's very early in the process to submit something like this, but we did submit a draft declaration of planned community, and that is in the package. That would be refined as we go through the land development and permitting processes, but it placed that in the record to show the intention that this would be a planned community, and provisions are made for the preservation and maintenance of the open space. And I'll also note for the record that the township will have certain rights to ensure that those provisions are followed as set forth in Code Section 28099D through GG. And that would be typical for your solicitor to review those, you know, before the plans were recorded, if they were approved at land development. Rob, will the, in addition to the declaration that I mentioned, would it be customary to place on the recorded plans notes restrictions that preserve the common open space from further development?
Yeah.
Moving to the residential buffer requirements, do the proposed plans provide the required 25-feet buffer area?
Yes, the buffer is required along the residential property. So going to the left of Exhibit A11, down the property line, so Grant Avenue is kind of off the page to the left. You can see the houses. So the buffer requirement is along that property line, along both sides of the Forest Lane property. And then there is one property to the right, as looking at this image. So along the rear property of the adjacent Forest Lane property, we have a buffer that goes almost to, and I believe that is Unit, Unit 12, approximately Unit 12 is where the required buffer is located and provided.
And are there any road structures or parking areas contained within the required 25-foot buffer area?
No, there are not.
And as required by the ordinance 28091G, when calculating the required open space, did you include the 25-feet buffer area in the calculation of open space?
No, we did not.
So in fact, this is an additional area of open space, although it's called a buffer, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to turn to 28094, the area and height regulations for density modification. Does the plan, proposed plan comply with the applicable building area coverage and height regulations?
Yes.
And that information can be found on the plans?
Yes, I believe it's Sheet 4 of the plan set.
And does the proposed plan comply with the applicable impervious coverage requirements?
Yes, the impervious coverage is permitted at 45%, and the proposed plan is in compliance.
There's a Section 28095 that has some sort of more general provisions that they call site consideration. Are you familiar with this provision?
Yes.
Turning to 28095A, I wanted to go over a few of those provisions. Does the proposed plan avoid excessive earth moving?
Yes.
Are there any lake streams or wooded slopes on the tract?
There are not.
Do the plans specify the means for protecting trees and other natural features during construction?
Yes, we have a plan sheet dedicated to the erosion settlement control and the tree protection.
And those topics would also be addressed at land development and the NPDES process?
Yes, during our land development and permitting processes.
Will seeding, sodding, and other planting be applied to stabilize the soil and to enhance the appearance of open areas?
Yes.
Are the site provisions of Chapter 255 of the Radnor Code subdivision in land development being satisfied?
Yes, and that'll be further evaluated during our land development.
Will the project be served by public sanitary sewers and public water?
Yes.
In fact, the site already has that service. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And does the general area have that service as well?
To my knowledge, everything surrounding has that service.
Turning to 28097, which is entitled yards, this has some requirements for density modification. Is any dwelling located closer than 35 feet from the outside of any curves or the edge of paving for Strafford Avenue or Eagle Road?
No.
So we comply with those setback requirements?
Yes, we do.
And do the plans show a minimum 30-feet rear yard?
Yes, they do.
And do the townhome groupings have a minimum 30-feet side yard distance between each grouping as required by Code 97D?
Yes, they do.
Are there any accessory structures proposed in the required perimeter yard areas?
We're not proposing any accessory structure.
Turning to 28098, which is another more general type of provision, just to touch on this, did the plan take into account the topography and the natural features of the site, which are primarily trees?
Yes. Yes.
Code section 28098C states there should be adequate vehicular and pedestrian access and parking provided. Does the project provide for adequate vehicular access?
Yes, we have two driveway access points and our internal road is designed to township standards.
And you touched on the ample pedestrian access that will be provided earlier in your testimony?
Yes, we have sidewalks on both Stratford and Eagle Roads, and then we have the internal sidewalk along our internal road. And we have a pedestrian connection out to the Eagle Village.
And can you describe the parking that is provided with this plan?
Yeah, so there's, each unit will have a two-car garage. There is driveway parking that you could actually get two parking spaces in each driveway. And then I believe we have 12 other parking spaces which are accessed from the common driveway or from the internal road.
And do those parking spaces that you meant, you mentioned comply with the applicable requirements for the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
I'd like to move to a different topic. I think we've worked through the density modification requirements in the zoning ordinance. Have you compared the proposed density modification plan to a more, I'll call conventional-style subdivision and redevelopment of the properties under the R4 district provisions?
Yes, Bern, if you could bring up exhibit A12.
In connection with that effort, did you prepare this sketch that shows a conventional-style subdivision under R4 without use of density modification?
Yes.
Now, this is only a sketch, so this isn't fully engineered or anything like that, but can you tell how you developed the sketch and what this is showing?
Yeah, so we look at the R4 lot size requirements and started identifying how to, you know, lay out lots or how layout lots could be built on this parcel. When we were working on the configuration, we developed 31 lots that could be developed underneath the R4 on this subject tract. We have, as you can see, we have lots that access off of Eagle Road. So that's, let's hear, lots 27 through 31 would be accessed from Eagle Road. And then lots access from Stratford Road, and then we have an internal new road that would be constructed with, I believe there were 24 homes on the internal road.
And this sketch envisions, you know, what I would call conventional, fully lotting out the site, is that correct?
That is correct.
So under conventional R4, there's no common open space required, is that correct?
There's no common open space, there's no buffer requirement. You know, the perimeter setbacks that were required on density modification aren't there. You're just relying on the underlying zoning setbacks. So there's just a traditional development.
And in your opinion, is the proposed, does the proposed density modification development have advantages over a conventional R4 district subdivision?
Yeah, starting, I think, from the kind of access and a number of curb cuts, you can see clearly that this prop, that this development would have many additional curb cuts that would be proposed along Eagle and Stratford. You wouldn't have, and it's hard to see on this one because we just have the image without any of the surrounding, but I believe Mr. Pansack will talk further about this, but you, there'll be more disturbance really around the perimeter where we're preserving additional trees on the density modification. This didn't provide any of those. These would have individual on-lot stormwater systems, most likely where it wouldn't have the more comprehensive system we were proposing with the density modification. We didn't have the buffers that we were providing with the density modification, so I believe that the density modification is a better plan.
And correct me if I'm wrong, under R4 zoning, without having the perimeter setback, you could even have an accessory structure, a single lot within three feet of a property line?
Yes, I believe that's what the code allows.
If we could go back to, I think it was A11, please. I'd like to turn, Rob, to some general conditional use standards. We went over how the plan complies with the specific density modification standards. Can you, I think we hit all of them, but can you confirm your professional opinion as to whether the proposed plans comply with all of the applicable specific density modification standards?
Yes.
Now, turning to the general conditional use standards, some of these are found at code section 28137B. And these in turn refer you to 28145, which are actually for the review of special exception applications. Are you familiar with these standards?
Yes, I am.
And I'm not going to ask you to go through each of them. If any of them come into issue, we can go back and touch on them as we need to, perhaps in rebuttal. But in your professional opinion, is the proposed plan consistent with these requirements, the general requirements of 28137B and 28145?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, would the density modification plan that we're proposing have any greater impact on neighboring properties, the area in general, or the township public health, safety, and welfare than a typical development of this type?
No, I think the the proposed byright plan shown in exhibit A12 demonstrates that this would actually have less impact than a traditional subdivision.
And then if we focus on this plan, does this plan have any atypical adverse impacts to the neighboring properties, the area or the township, public health, safety, and welfare, more than a typical development like this, a typical townhome development?
No.
That's the end of my direct questions for Mr. Lambert.
Okay. Okay, the parties, I'm going to go through the parties if you have questions for Mr. Lambert about any of his testimony. Mr. Shuda, you're first. Do you have any questions? Can we?
So Lambert, good evening. Thank you. Let me put my video on. The, thank you for your presentation and information. Quite helpful. Joe Shuda, 14 Forest Lane. With respect to the proposed density modification plan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the proposed density modification plan, recognizing that a significant emphasis was placed on stormwater management, the proposed systems are very robust appearing. My question, the first question I have regarding that particular aspect of the project is what if and when would a, who would be responsible if the system doesn't perform as recommended or as projected? Where is that going to fall in terms of responsibilities?
To the, the future homeowners, so the homeowners association would be responsible for the continued operation and maintenance of that stormwater system.
And with respect to that maintenance, is there a provision, you know, it was alluded to that there will be a draft of a planned community packet? Is that particular aspect of that incorporated in the planned community packet that will be presented to the homeowners association? Am I led to believe that?
Let me, let me, let me address this, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Shuda, on a project like this and any project like this in Radnor Township or to a different township these days, these stormwater facilities are subject to an agreement required by DEP that requires the owner of the facilities, which in this case is going to be the HOA, to maintain these and fix these in perpetuity. So if, if for some reason it blows up 30 years from now, there is a recordable document that the township has the right to enforce maintenance and repair of these facilities.
And would that extend out beyond the impact that that failure in that facility would have? How would that impact the community then? If there was subsequent damage and property loss or something to that effect?
Well, I mean, you're talking about liability. I mean, I'm talking about,
Exactly.
Well, that's not a question you're going to get answered tonight because that's pretty speculative. But your question, your question had to do with who's going to maintain it, who's going to fix it? And
Correct.
You know, because of the agreement that the townships are required to execute with any developer, obviously, the landowner, the HOA, has to maintain that the township would have the right to inspect it at any time, and the township would have the right to enforce repairs if it's not being maintained properly. So beyond that, I don't know that your liability question really, really is going to get answered. Do you have another question? You have another question for the witness?
Yes, I do. And just to put a cap on that liability question, or not a cap, but a, is there, will there be an opportunity for that type of question to be answered?
I don't think that's part of the testimony in this case. I think if you have questions about liability, I would seek private legal counsel and ask him or her that question.
Okay, we can pursue that. With respect to the impervious coverage of the project, Mr. Lambert, you cited that 15% volume was met. Do you have an exact number of what that impervious coverage represents as part of the project?
So 45% is permitted as this project, and we're proposing 43.6%. I believe we've done it conservative.
For impervious.
For impervious. I believe that we've actually done it in a conservative way. I think our, our percentage actually could be less, but we looked at really the overall net lot area with all the impervious within the net lot area. I think the the code actually permits you to do some carve-outs, but we did not do the carve-out.
Okay. And another question would be with respect to structures that are being permitted currently. There are none being permitted. What type of structures are will be permitted? What's allowed on this type of development?
I believe the question you were referring to is talking about the open space, the 15% of the open space, and that you're permitted to have some structures and, and, you know, a gazebo or something along those lines. We are not proposing any of that on this. You know, but that's what we're, I think that's what that question was referring to.
Okay, so subsequently, if the the residents who are part of the HOA decide they want to put up some form of structure, they will be limited to what type of structure that can be constructed?
There's, I believe they permit accessories. I'd have to look at the definition of what exactly we're not proposing.
Let me answer it. The ordinance says outdoor recreational use, that's it.
Okay.
Structures related to outdoor recreational use, that's all that's permitted.
Okay. So if they decided, you know, is there limitations on what those heights and how extravagant or how exotic they can be?
No, not in the ordinance. There's not.
Okay. Yeah, that would be my questions for right now. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Johnston? Ian, we need to unmute Ms. Johnston.
Hold on.
Okay.
My assistant.
Say the clock. You're muted, Ms. Johnston.
I'm in a room with a large old clock.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I appreciate that the time that went into this, and I see that all the ordinances and rules of the township have been met. However, as resident of Grant Lane, I understand this is coming in, but I am concerned about the removal of trees on the Hamilton property, particularly down, I'm at 17, so I would be down where the one water retention area is. Yes, yes. There are a lot of large trees back in that area. I'm wondering if the Township Tree Commission has come in and looked at those trees. I'm concerned about the size of the trees that will be coming in. They all look nice and green there, but I would like to know what type, and I'm sure that that's going to be addressed when the landscaping people come in. But I am very concerned about the removal of the trees that are on the property in that corner area. And that we will be looking directly into these townhomes, all of us out there on Grant Lane. I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about trash, believe it or not. You've got
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, let's,
Is there a question?
Yeah, let me do this. Ms. Johnston, Mr. Lambert just testified to the site plan. So you have questions about the trees? That's fine. He didn't testify about trash. You can make those comments later.
Okay.
I understand. So let me just, you have to ask questions. So, Mr. Lambert, question to you is, what's going to happen to the mature trees that are on the property in that area of the property?
There are some trees that will be removed in that area. We, to answer your other question, we have not been to the Shade Tree Commission as of yet as part of this process, but there will be trees removed. There will also be trees preserved in that area.
Tree be, commission be brought in?
Yes, as part of the land development process, we will be presenting to the Shade Tree Commission.
Mr. Pansack, our landscape architect, will also have testimony for you and everyone, Ms. Johnston. He'll tell you some of the things they've done, and we will be going to the Shade Tree Commission in the normal course of things.
What if they would recommend not putting those townhomes down in that corner?
Ms. Johnston, again, I'm going to ask you just to ask questions of Mr. Lambert. You can go to the Shade Tree Commission meeting and you can ask them that question. They will have this plan. And they're going to have to present this plan on what they plan on removing and what they plan on leaving there. So that's where you want to ask that question, because that's, again, it's speculative. Do you have any more questions for Mr. Lambert, please? Okay. Mr. Sherry, Steve Sherry?
Sir, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. This, both Mr. Broadsman, thank you.
Excuse me, sir. You need to come closer to your microphone and nice and loud. I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Just keep your voice up.
Okay. I got the first question. Thank you, guys, for, for the presentation. You described this tract of land as three properties, A, B, and C, listed on your, on your plans. Do you have the individual acreage of each A, B, and C property?
Yep. Let's see here. Give me one second. I, I won't have, I won't have Burn go to the exhibit, but I'll refer to it just so you, you have it. Exhibit A four, um, sheet two of 15, um, has a table on the, uh, kind of center bottom, that lists the areas of the properties. And I don't have it in acres. I have it in square feet, but the gross acreage of A was 153,000 square feet plus or minus. B was 200,000, uh, square feet plus or minus. And, uh, 18 Forest was, uh, just under 10,000 square feet.
So none of these properties individually meet the five acre requirement, correct?
The individual properties are, are, are not five acres. It's, it's total, they're well over the five acres.
In total, looking at the three properties, it's 7.5, correct?
Yeah, I believe it was seven, yeah, 7, 7.5 or 7.75.
In each of these properties, A, B, and C for reference are individually deeded with unique tax folio numbers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you are, for the purposes of this conditional use application, treating these three properties as one?
We are proposing to merge the properties into one parcel.
Do you propose redeeding the property?
Technically, I believe a new deed is, is produced. There's a new, usually they keep a folio number, um, and they retire the others rather than issuing a new folio number.
When will the redeeding be, take place in this process?
When we go to record the plans.
Okay. So for the purposes, we're taking three smaller properties, combining them for one, with the assumption that it will be redeeded to meet the five acre requirement, correct?
Correct.
Just you also, thank you. You, you, you were there at all of the meetings, the community meetings, which were, were great. Well, we thought they were great. So that, that kind of leads to my question to you. Since you brought up those meetings, how would you characterize the residential, resident attendance at those meetings?
I thought the residential, it was a fair attendance.
Pretty full.
Good attendance.
Pretty full room, correct? And again, appreciative of, you, you mentioned out of the outcome of these community meetings, that you went back to the, to the plans and you increased the stormwater management system, correct?
Correct. We, we added a stormwater system, um, in the forest lane, uh, property.
Correct. So which was appreciated. Do you recall any other items at those community meetings that were kind of hot button issues for discussion?
There were several issues that were discussed. Uh, please let me know what you, what you're referring to.
Do you recall going to the eastern end of the property where there was concern expressed about both of your exits onto Stratford Avenue? And the possibility of continuing your road on the eastern side to an exit, at least one exit, onto Eagle Road? Do you recall those discussions?
There, there was discussion about that, yes.
And just out of curiosity, the stormwater increase went somewhere, you know, and we, you added more to it. Was, what was the discussion, if there was any, about relieving Stratford Ave from some of the traffic by funneling some of it to Eagle? Was that discussion kind of a non-starter with the group? Was it?
No, we, we discussed it. We reviewed it with the traffic engineer, which will be a later witness. Um, and, and believe that this is a, a better plan.
Okay. So you feel having both exits onto Stratford Ave is better than going onto Eagle? Just due to the traffic on Eagle?
Uh, there, there's the traffic on Eagle. Um, we can access Eagle. You know, if somebody were leaving the site, they would make a, a right onto Stratford, go, um, if they were using our eastern entrance, go, you know, 100, 150 feet, whatever it is there to the stop sign and have a, a controlled access to Eagle Road, um, where they could make a right or a left or, or straight at a four-way stop.
Thank you. I was just curious, you know, where the, where the discussion on that went. Just I got two more and then I'll be done. Um, since you brought up your initial plan with the existing plan as the Hamilton estate stands as it is today, you mentioned the comment that the impervious surface, that the, the development, you know, the, the estate itself is fairly well developed. This is how you described it. What is, do you know what the current impervious surface is on the estate today? And what it will be, assuming you get this density modification application approved?
Yes. So it would be on sheet four, exhibit A four, sheet four, on the left-hand side of that page, there is a table, which identifies that the existing impervious is roughly 24%, where we're going to, you know, 43.6%.
Thank you. One last, again, I know it'll get addressed further with the land development, but again, since you brought it up and you were talking extensively about the stormwater management system that's put in place here, referencing units 16 through 20, kind of on the western edge that borders Grant Lane.
Yeah.
Would you characterize, or am I correct to characterize that those units are predominantly at the lowest point of the property, assuming that the grade remains consistent with the, as it is today?
I have to double check. I believe that bottom left.
Right.
Goes lower.
Catch, I believe, but if you looked at a linear line, kind of along Stratford Ave, let's just use Stratford Ave as, as the example. Stratford Ave runs downhill towards unit 16 through 20. Is that correct?
Stratford Ave runs downhill toward Grant Lane.
Correct. Okay. So for, you went into, you kind of opened up this a little bit. So that's why you talked about how many of the units are, have stormwater that it's in exceedance of what is required, which is thankful. Thank you. For specifically those units 16 through 20, there is currently no impervious surface in that area.
So I, I, I would, I would disagree with that assertion.
Okay. Correct me where I'm wrong.
Uh, there's the existing driveway that comes in off of Stratford Road. There's the parking court for the main house and the, a portion of the existing dwelling is all in that area that drains in that direction.
I, I agree with that. I'm, I'm specifically talking about where units 16 through 20 lie. There is nothing but sod and soil in that area, correct?
I, it's the parking court falls within, I'd have to look at a superimposed plan, but the parking court falls in that area.
Okay. Just, but for, for those, I think we can, whether it's there or not, we can agree that there's.
So I, the, the, the existing driveway, um, Bernie, can you bring up, uh, exhibit A four, sheet? Give me a second. Uh, sheet six. And zoom in on the area discussion, please. So, so this plan is a little bit hard to read and you may, you may need to be an engineer, but, um, it, it, it has lots of lines all laying on top of one another. But what reflected on it is, is that you have the existing improvements. And if you scroll the other way, Burn, so you can see Stratford Avenue. So the line on the page of, again, this is A four, sheet six. So if you start at Stratford Avenue, um, there's a note that says compost filter sock, uh, with a line. And that is actually where the existing driveway is. You can see the two lines, uh, coming in and that is the existing driveway coming into a, it widens out as a parking court. Um, and then comes back, uh, continues going further to the site. The proposed units are shown on top of that, um, and you can see, let's call it roughly a rectangle, um, that sits in that area. So in, in the area of the units, yes, there is areas that have landscaping, but there is, are currently improvements in that area, um, that is right on top of where those units are.
I, I appreciate that and sorry for taking you down a rabbit hole. I was just trying to get to my question. My question is for those particular units, is there any stormwater system that protects the Grant Lane residents? I can understand your flow that you had in the overall, uh, depiction on your A four sheet. But particularly for that area, what is the stormwater?
So we're proposing to collect, um, the stormwater from all those units. So it would be, you know, both picking up the roof drains and then draining it down to the stormwater basin in the bottom left-hand corner of the site prior to the forest lane. So it's kind of a triangular system, um, down in that area. So we're proposing to actually pick up, um, all the roof drains from that. We do have some surface inlets, uh, that are also picking up surface waters, um, create a small swale behind those units to, really cut off the flow. My understanding was that the units, uh, that houses on Grant Lane, you know, currently experienced runoff, uh, from this site. And we were making, you know, every effort to cut off that existing flow and the, you know, the, the new flow is be able to cut it off, be able to control it into, uh, the system.
Okay. You, you, you hit it at the end there. That's our concern is the flow along the Grant Lane, Hamilton property line to get it to the catch basin. I look forward to hearing more about it during the land development and, and further, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zari. Gregory Zari. He's left us.
I'm sorry. I couldn't find my mute button. There we are. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Um, so I have a, a several questions for you. First one, I want to talk about Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue. Do those roads currently allow parking on the street?
Uh, not in this section that I'm aware of.
Are there plans to improve the roads to allow parking on those, those two streets?
We are not proposing widening either of those roads.
Okay. The loop road that you're building within the property, uh, will that accommodate parking, parallel parking on the street?
Um, it's, it's a 28 foot wide. We have, uh, two areas of parking, uh, that are proposed on that. Being a 28 foot wide road, I think just you have a natural ability to be able to have parallel parking in a development like this. But in addition to that, we have, uh, spaces, uh, that are designated off of that area.
Okay. So the number of driveways and the very narrow green strip, I'm not entirely sure that there would be uh, an ability to parallel park, um, on that road without blocking someone's driveway. Would you agree to that?
Um, I mean, there's some distance in between, you know, if you had a, a event in between the driveways that you'd still be able to, uh, to park. But we have provided the additional parking, um, as designated parking spaces in those two locations, in addition to the driveway and garage spaces of each unit.
Okay. So I see those spots and I think that you numbered them at 12. Is that correct?
I believe that is the number. Yes.
Okay. So we have 41 houses. You know, these, I think we're going to be about 2,000 square foot houses, enough room to have a nice sized party. And you only have 12 visitors parking spaces with maybe a few cars here and there on the road, wherever the green space would allow for curb parking. I'm sure that meets the letter of the law. However, uh, that seems inadequate.
There's not a question here.
Yeah. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Zari.
Yes.
You, you said that seems inadequate. Mr. Lambert, do you agree with that statement? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Zari. Ask a question, please.
Uh, I, I did ask the question. That's, you, you answered what it was I was going for, whether the, the parking really was in fact adequate in a realistic sense for that. But, uh, it does meet the letter of the law and that's what you're trying to do is just the letter of the law, apparently. I have a couple more questions for you. The property, uh, on 18 Forest Lane. Yeah. Left-hand corner of the site, if you can scroll up a bit. There we go. So that, uh, currently has a single family house on it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, the intent is not to sell that piece of property as a single family home? Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That house will be removed and that property will be merged into the overall tract.
And is, does that contribution of open area help with your impervious area coverage ratio for this property?
It is part of our tract area. Yes.
Okay. So you're utilizing that as open area, um, to balance out the increased impervious surfaces?
We, we use that, that parcel as part of our tract area. Yes.
Okay. Uh, I understand why that's done that way now. Thank you. The next question is regarding stormwater management. Are you able to address questions about that system?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, the, um, the, the area where we live, I live on Forest Lane, which is downhill, as it were, from this development. Everyone in this neighborhood and, and, uh, in the surrounding area certainly has stormwater issues, as everyone is well aware and discussed ad nauseam. But I would like to bring it up just, just for a moment. There's two issues that are involved with stormwater. One is the initial impact of the storm event and the second is the, uh, groundwater effect when, after the water seeps into the ground. Currently, we have the flash flood effect during a heavy rain where, uh, there's a significant amount of surface runoff, uh, has created damage to a lot of persons' properties, uh, in our area. The intent now is to collect that stormwater and retain it on site in underground basins and allow it to infiltrate into the ground. Is that correct?
Our systems provide both rate and volume controls.
Okay. So whatever it can't, it can't, uh, whatever cannot be absorbed into the ground will be channeled away, uh, in underground piping to connect to the existing stormwater line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The, the question I have for you is, has anyone done a water table analysis? And what the effect will be of these highly concentrated areas of stormwater being introduced more effectively into the groundwater and how that is going to affect everyone downhill from the site?
We have not done a groundwater study. We've done the, uh, permeability tests of the soils. We've looked for limiting zones, um, and we have, uh, designed the systems accordingly.
Okay. So all of the, the families who are, uh, living, um, downstream, as it were, from this property, who do have hydrostatic pressure problems, water entering the basements from groundwater, not just stormwater events on the surface. To my mind, this is going to be exacerbated by the greater, uh, amount of water over a longer protracted periods of time, uh, into the water table. Would you agree that that's a potential problem?
I would say it's unlikely.
How so?
I believe that the amount of water that we're distributing, if you look at the size of the aquifer, or groundwater tables and the amount of water we're infiltrating, it would make a, a very small impact. You know, we have not done an analysis of your property or this aquifer, but, um, when you look at the, the area, um, it would be unlikely.
Okay. You said a small impact. So it will have a negative impact. Your, your reference of small is subjective.
No, I, I, it's an unlikely impact. I think it's immeasurable.
You don't have any empirical data to provide to us to, uh, offer any, uh, reassurance of that, do you?
I do not.
All right. Then we can't rely on that. So that handles the stormwater issue. I'm sure that this will be going on and, and further. We'll have opportunities to continue to explore this in further meetings, uh, Mr. Rice.
Well, this is the first step. As I said when we started, this is conditional use and, you know, there's questions of witnesses and then if this advances, there'll be a land development process where it'll be in front of the township planning commission and then the board of commissioners. So that's probably where some of your more detailed input auto occur at that point. Do you have any more questions for this witness, sir?
Well, yes, one last question. Um, and again, it's still related to stormwater. And that is the discussion that was, uh, thrown out or, or. And that is the discussion that was thrown out or, or the item that was discussed in last meeting about channeling the water to a new storm water line in Fairfield Lane as opposed to using the current overburdened pipe in Forest Lane. But the, there hasn't, that hasn't been addressed or hasn't been spoken to. Can you tell me if that's still a consideration?
We're, we're reducing both the rate and volume of, of water reaching that system. And we continue to propose to, to connect to the existing drainage system.
So consideration of the new pipe in Fairfield Lane, which is in Radnor Township handling Radnor Stormwater is not being considered further?
We, we considered it and, and have not pursued that.
Okay. Then could I respectfully request that in the follow-up meetings, you find a way to get some data to us about the groundwater issue? Cause I think that that is a significant problem that does need to be addressed before this proposal can be approved.
We'll evaluate the storm water and as we talked about before, it goes through an extensive review process with both the township engineers and the county reviewing the MPDS permit.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Serene, any questions?
Yes. I just have one question. Mr. Lambert, since we are talking about the, the density issues here. Second question, do you know both how many people live on the property today and how many vehicles are on it versus what you anticipate? Once this plan is complete?
We have a traffic expert that will speak about the anticipated number of vehicles.
Well, the question was how many people are living on the property? So if Mr. Lambert can answer that.
I don't know how many, I don't, I don't know how many, you know, individual persons live on the property.
Do you have a number as to how many you anticipate given the?
I do not.
Mr. Serene, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Jennifer Sarhadi, any questions for the witness?
Hi. I do not have any questions for this witness, Mr. Rice. When is the traffic engineer testifying?
Mr. Brosman, when is the traffic engineer testifying?
At this time, it's our plan to have him testify after Mr. Panzak, who will come next. Mr. Panzak is the landscape architect.
All right. Thank you. My husband, Richard Sarhadi, S A R H A D D I, does have a question or two for Mr. Lambert.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Lambert. Thank you for appearing today and answering all of our questions. Appreciate it in the time. Hey, so a couple of questions regarding the storm water and just sewage in general. What kind of testing have you guys done to the storm water drainage and the accommodation for the pipes or whatever you're putting in to handle the additional sewage and water resulting from the basically doubling of impervious surface and the, I don't know. What's the word for one to 40 or 41 occupants going into this development? Have you done testing? Is there some kind of technology that gives?
I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we're mixing terms. When you were talking about storm water, when you were talking about, you know, are you talking about sanitary sewer? Is that the other question?
Talking about water runoff and sanitary. So if, if you could, if you could address both.
Right. So the storm water question we talked about is, is we did permeability tests, which we went and excavated soil on the site, analyzed the soil, reviewed how quickly the soil would absorb water. We did a, a whole storm water calculation that was developed for this whole site, a whole model. When your house was built, it was done with a similar fashion and right, they would go out, do a test, they do the storm water system. This is looking at it at a little bit larger scale, but in a very similar fashion. As far as the sanitary sewer goes, you know, this would connect to the public sanitary system like the surrounding properties do.
And are, has there been a determination that the additional 40 units of sewage? So it's a one to 40 ratio would be able to handle the sewage that's flowing in. I mean, existing is handling it the way it is today, but we have 40 more units coming in with.
So there's a, there's a whole process for the sanitary sewer approval. It's a planning module. It gets reviewed by DEP. So I'm not aware of any constraints in the Radnor Township collection and conveyance systems. You know, we then have to get approval of all the downstream people, all the way down to the treatment plant. And that gets approved through DEP.
So, so has that testing been done yet? I mean, do you, I mean, the basics?
So there is no testing for that. It's, it's, it's a, it's a conveyance. You know, they, they go through a review of the conveyance of the, of the sewage.
So, and has there been some determination that the additional 40 units to the comparable one unit on the property will not overwhelm the sewage system that's in place? Do you, what do you think?
So that's the planning module process, right? And so, and, and so there's a process to go get that approval that we go through.
The, the, the other thing is with respect to the water runoff, I don't see a retention pond or anything like that. So can, can you, can you say more about the water runoff and where that will go, how that will be handled?
Yeah. So I'm not sure. You may have missed the, the beginning part of my testimony where I, where I explained that we have six underground storm water systems proposed on the site, right? So you can see where the, the plan, I believe, referring to exhibit A 11 is shown on the screen right now. And there's areas shown as recharge areas. And so we have six areas proposed for the, you know, for the storm water systems. And then there's collection and conveyance throughout the, the property.
The, the other question I have relates to the prices of the townhouses that, that I'm seeing here, the 41 units, as opposed to the prior plot that was shown, I think it was like 24 homes. Can you, can you, can you tell me from a revenue standpoint, what's the difference between the putting the 42 or 41 townhomes on as opposed to the, to, to a traditional kind of subdivision?
I cannot. I'm not, that's not, I'm an engineer.
Okay. So how much will you be charging for each of these?
Mr. Sarhadi, Mr. Lambert is a civil engineer. He did not testify about any of that. You may have another witness that you can ask that question. But not this witness. So.
My fault. I, I have, I've been trying to put the, my two six-year-old twins to bed in between this whole thing. So.
So, so what, do you have a question about his engineering?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Ted, Himeal? Forest Lane.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Could you do me a favor and blow up right where your cursor is, I think to the right where it says 41 and recharge area? Yeah. If you could just, yeah, magnify that and scroll back down. So I'm on Forest Lane, right? And it's been, well, I've been at every meeting, beaten, beaten, beaten the drum that storm water is a big issue. So first of all, I want to compliment everybody here on the development side. I hate to throw your compliment, but I have to because we voiced a concern about storm water. And it sounds like next to Joe Shooter's place, you're going to put an additional storm water management, you know, system in place. So that's great. So yeah, I, I, yeah, let's start there. So right at the corner of Forest Lane in Fairfield, that's great. So, so right there, right where your cursor is, that house is going to remain, right where the green space is, correct me if I'm wrong, right underneath it is where they're going to have the collection of the water, correct?
So on Forest Lane, the, the parcel there, there will be a storm water system that we're going to put on that parcel roughly in the area where the existing house is located.
Okay. So that's great. That seems above and beyond. I just have a question. So you mentioned earlier, so the question to you, Rob, and you've been great, very, very detailed. You mentioned that there's some data that this meets and exceeds your expectations with storm water management codes or whatever. Forgive me if I'm not using the right terms. Can you share that data with us that, that kind of, you know, trust you, but can you prove that to us? That, hey, the expectations is whatever, and we're doing more and over and above what those storm water expectations are?
Yeah. So one of the exhibits that's in the package was exhibit A to B, which was the post-construction storm water management analysis for the property. And I don't know.
Hey, make it, make it easy on me. I'm from Mississippi. So make, break it down for me. So what is it supposed to be and what are you giving us?
So I, I, I just wanted to look at the table, right? I don't know what the numbers are off the top, off the top of my head, right? So for instance, a, a storms are graded. Sometimes I think it's unfortunate the way that they've graded them, but it's a probability of return. But they refer to it as a, a year storm, right? So there's the one, the two, the five, the 10, the 25 and 50 and 100-year storm, which we have to run models for each one of those storms to show that we're reducing the rate of runoff when it's leaving the site. And for instance, the 100-year storm, the off-site runoff is, is 20 cubic feet per second is, is what the, the metric is. And our post-development is 10, right? And so we'd be permitted 20 and I'm rounding off numbers, but you know, we're permitted 20.
That's fine. I give you that.
And, and we are discharging 10, right? So we're basically cutting it in half of what, of what would be permitted. And then, you know, volume again, where I believe we're roughly double. The volume we're infiltrating, we'd actually be allowed to, you know, release more. And I understand there's other questions about that, but we're actually, you know, between the rates and the volume, we're exceeding the code.
Okay. So to Greg Cesari's point, so it's been well documented and well voiced that a lot of the residents downstream, Forest Lane, major issues. So one extra drop of water is one too many, right? So I'd have to really push back to you guys. Why did you guys not look at taking any of the water from that green area that we're talking about, the corner of Forest Lane in Fairfield and pushing it away from Forest Lane? Everybody in their right mind logically knows that anything that goes to Forest Lane is just throwing gasoline on the fire. You, you know that any logical person knows that, right? By now.
So we're cutting.
If not, they're just not listening to us. So.
We're, we're cutting ours in half.
Let me just finish my question. Just hang on a second. So if, if you're cutting it in half, that's fine. But one extra drop is one too many. So why have you, why have you guys not looked at pushing it to Fairfield, which would help alleviate the problems?
The, there was no collection system available in Fairfield and, and there was, there's a myriad of other concerns of going there. We have a, a system that we're connecting to and we're reducing the, the rate and volume in half.
Okay.
And we, as you know, as you know, from, please let me finish. As, as, as you know, from sitting through our storm water meetings and everything else is that we control our storm water and we are only a small portion of the water that gets to Forest Lane further downstream. That there's many other contributing areas to that storm water system.
Okay. I hear you. But it sounds like you guys just don't want to maybe do that. I, I would ask you, and again, I'm giving you a compliment that you guys have done something as a, as a small step forward, adding an additional storm water management system right next to Joe Shooter's property. That's great. But you need to take it a step further because I, with all due respect, I'm tired of hearing about the once in a hundred year storms because that doesn't fly anymore because it's happening every other year. We had it in 18. We had it two years prior. It seems like I've lived here 18 years, 19 years. And I think we've had five quote unquote 100-year storms since then. So with all due respect, I need you guys to go back and see if you guys can do some analysis and push it to Fairfield Lane because you're not helping us by adding any other water to Forest Lane. So that's the first thing. So I respectfully ask you to, to go back and do that. All right. Let's talk about sewage for a second. All right. So there is an expert in our development area that talked about the sewers that definitely does not agree with your assessment that we're going to be okay. So forgive me, she could not be here. She talked about the R H M SCUD interceptor. Okay. I'm just re-quoting. Is already at capacity. Now, your earlier testimony said that we're going to be fine. So correct me if I'm wrong, novice here, you're pushing sewage from these additional 40 homes, 41 homes to this R H M SCUDs interceptor. Is that correct? That's what she said. And she does business in Radnor and understands Radnor sewers better than I do, but she could not be on the call.
So, so it does go down through, I believe it's the, you know, Haverford Marple, all the way down to the treatment plant. As I explained, is there is a, there is a process, right, of a planning module process to get capacity, right? And so that, that system is reviewed by DEP and capacity is issued to applicants for the sewer. And so we request a certain amount of EDUs, equivalent dwelling units. That is analyzed and those, those are released by that entity to allow additional connections. And that goes, you know, for any development in Radnor. And, you know, we've been involved in a lot of projects that's, you know, they've had a, not even sure how they have classified technically that, but we have had other projects recently receive capacity. And we have, would anticipate that this process, that this property will also receive capacity for, for that connection.
Okay. She's telling me she's an expert in it, not me, just re-quoting. She's saying they're already at capacity. So how do you get?
Mr. Rice, we're into your.
Mr. Himeal, it's not argument for you to argue with the witness. He answered your question. I think it's pretty common knowledge.
All right. Let's move on. Fair enough. It's all good. It's all good. Last thing I have. So go back to your, blow up your thing to 41, whatever. Go to 41. Your, yeah. Blow it up. Okay. Let's talk about traffic real quick. This has nothing to do with me personally, but it's something that I want to hold you guys accountable to something they said that you were going to look into. So scroll down. Yep. All right. Help me understand something. Not a smart guy here. Where it says recharging area between segment or unit 41 and number two. So the question earlier is about traffic. And I was at, I've been at every meeting and we asked the developer specifically, hey, have you considered at least flowing some of the traffic out to Eagle Road? I know you addressed this a little bit earlier and here comes the question. And in the meeting 10 months ago, the developer said, you know what? We didn't really consider that. And I said, why? He says, we just did it. I said, would you mind considering that? So can you help me understand? Evidently over the last nine months, you must have considered it. Why did you guys not think that adding a throughway to Eagle Road to exit as you're going towards Wayne, you're going to come out where it says recharging area and you're going to take a right? Why did you guys feel that that was a better plan, what you're showing today, than taking that suggestion from all the residents to say, let's minimize the traffic? And so what, what led you to believe that this is the better plan?
Mr. Rice, could we have our traffic engineer answer this?
Yeah, we, let's hold that, Mr. Himeal, until we get a traffic engineer. This is your civil engineer.
Okay. Timeout, timeout. He talked about this earlier in his testimony though.
Mr. Himeal, we'll deal with it. We'll, we'll deal with it with the traffic engineer. Okay. Let's, do you have any more questions for this witness?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin O'Sullivan, any questions?
I just have one question. Can you tell me a little bit about the height of the homes that will be built? Has that been something that's discussed? Are we looking at two-story, three-story? How many feet high are we looking at?
I believe the code, you know, to like every single family residence permits a 35-foot height. It's a two-story, I believe, is what is intended currently. You know, two stories and then you have obviously a roof above that is what's proposed.
Okay. And the construction of that includes the garage. It looks like a garage would go. It looks like a garage would go underneath a first or a second floor. So I guess can you just help me understand a little bit how that would work? Because I don't see a separate detached garage from any of these properties or even an attached garage with no roof. So is the first floor the garage and then second floor would be above that?
Yeah, we, you know, I, I, I think what you would think of is, is, is actually like part of a, part of that first floor, right? So that garage, you know, it's going to be a couple of steps lower. But it is going to be part of that first floor.
Anything else, Mrs. Sullivan?
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, Lisa Delizia, West Davida, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions for Mr. Lambert. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay. Cheryl Belair, any questions?
Yes, thank you. So the exhibit A11, you said that each of these has a two-car garage, right?
Yes.
So that's 80 cars, plus you said there's at least 12 spots on the road?
Correct, we have 12 additional parking spaces.
So that's 92 cars. So what you, the reason, the other diagram.
I lost her.
Yeah.
Start that question over again. She froze or something.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So.
Go ahead.
So, so that's like 92 cars. The, the proposal, the, um, the diagram of what you could build there today with the, what was it, 30 homes, 28? 24? I don't remember. How many cars would be on that diagram?
I get to object. About cars, we were talking about parking spots, so could we be clear?
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with parking spots. I think the, I think Ms. Belair is referring to the R4 development, which I think was 32 lots. Mr. Brosman, is that correct, or 34 lots?
31 were shown on that sketch.
Okay, so 31 lots, so obviously would be less parking spaces.
But is that allowed to have a two-car garage with each 31 spot or just one?
There's no limit on the size of a garage.
Yeah.
Have whatever would fit there.
So that, that could be 60 versus almost 90 to 100 cars could be trying to flow out of this property?
I have to object again, we're speaking about parking spots, not cars.
Assume.
So you said that each, each unit has a two-car garage?
Right, parking spots is, that was the testimony. So you're talking.
And then there were, there were a few parking spots, another 12 or so. But that's approximately 90-some cars that would have to exit and drive through the neighborhoods, correct? Assuming everyone has two cars, they use the two-car garage.
And, and there's a car parked in all 12 parking spots. That's, that's what you're assuming. Do you have any more questions, Ms. Belair?
No, I just wanted to confirm that that's the, there's possibly that number of cars that could
Correct.
existing in that spot.
Okay. Miss Mary Beth Torunian, any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Satterfield?
No questions.
Mary Ann Mahoney, any questions?
Yes. Thank you so much for listening. My question, I live at the corner of Stratford and Grant Lane. At one of the last meetings, I asked specifically, where does your drainage system stop? And they said, right at my, our property. So what I'm, I'm having a hard time picturing this. The water is going, you said the water will, the proposal that you have is the water will cover the roofs of the houses. But in my mind, this water, which is so significant, comes down Stratford Avenue and is going to start on our lawn, which already looks like a bog. The, the water disperses at our property, goes along the back of Grant Lane and continues down into Tridifferent. We lost a big tree a number of years ago. Fellow from Tridifferent was out yesterday trying to straighten our lamppost and our stop sign. It just doesn't make sense. We're, we're gonna, we're not protected. That's what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Mahoney, you need to ask Mr. Lambert a question, okay?
Well, that's my question. What are you going to do about that? I was told before, it's my problem.
Well, I, I think the testimony that you've heard is what they plan to do on their site to control stormwater runoff. You know, what hap, what happens off-site? And what are they going to do on your particular property? Mr. Lambert, I don't think can testify to that. But do you have?
One thing I could add, though, just, I, I'm not sure who told you that it was your problem. But the one thing that we have added to the plan and listening to neighbors, and I think you described it well, that the water comes down Stratford. We've actually added collection on Stratford to control that into our stormwater systems to help collect some of that runoff that was running down the side of Stratford to be able to collect it into the stormwater systems and control it. So it should reduce, you know, we're not obligated to do that, that, that street runoff. But after hearing concerns, we've added that collection.
Anything else, Ms. Mahoney?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rubin, any questions of the witness? Mr. Rubin on?
Yes.
Just questions about the change in density population. Over the last 10 years, do you have any idea how many people have lived on the property on average?
I do not.
You do not. Do you have any guess about how many people will be living there when it is fully developed?
I do not.
Okay, can you assume that there'll be at least one person in each unit?
For parts of the year, yes.
Okay. And my next question is for Mr. Rice. Once this plan is submitted, do the Radnor Township engineers then review it?
Yes, if, well, the engineers have already looked at the conditional use plan, but until there's a, an approval of the conditional use plan, then the developer will fully engineer all aspects of stormwater. They'll address traffic, and that'll all happen in front of the Township's Planning Commission. So this is sort of a preliminary zoning step before you get to the full-blown engineered plan.
Okay, and at what point do the neighbors and the community have a chance to have it reviewed by a, um, a engineer that's not paid by the developer? When do we get to make comment on the plan?
Well, you'll have an opportunity when it goes in front of the Planning Commission. You know, the Township's engineers are not, you know, working for the developer. They're reviewing the plans for the township. So if you have a third-party engineer that wants to review the plan, you just need to get copies of the plans from the township or from the applicant. And then you can go down that path if that's what you choose to do.
All right. Yes, we, I think we need an impartial view. It seems like everything's being taken as de facto, as a fact, and without any, um, any kind of review.
Any questions for this witness?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Huckelbreit, any questions? Any questions?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Lambert for his presentation. As I said before, I'm concerned about traffic and sewage and water runoff. And I have heard in the past and know from experience that the pipes are fairly old and wondered if this is going to have a negative impact on pipes outside of this development.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
The sewage pipes and the water pipes, I've heard are all very old in this area. So I just wondered whether added sewage, the added water, if this is going to have a negative impact on the surrounding sewage pipes and water.
The, you know, sewage that we're connecting to are township sewer pipes. And they, and they approve those connections and they, you know, routinely, the Public Works Department routinely maintains those. The, the Aqua, you know, I believe it's Aqua PA is what they trade under, you know, supplies the water, right? And so you're going to have Aqua, we would connect to Aqua. We'd have mains on our property that are run by Aqua to supply the, the water system.
Okay, thank you. I'm just concerned. I'm kind of late in this process. I, even though I have adjacent property in the field, that's the other area. I just heard about all of this in the last three months, I think. So I'm kind of late in getting involved, but thank you very much.
Well, you're right at the beginning, believe me. You're at, this is the start of it.
I was not aware of all these earlier meetings, so.
Okay, Ms. Neal, any questions?
Hi, yeah. Yes. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Perfect. So you mentioned the driveways will have room for two vehicles. Is that side-by-side or one in front of the other?
Side-by-side.
Side-by-side, okay. And then, once the 12 parking spaces are, the guest spaces or whatever on the road are occupied, where will the overflow traffic be legally allowed to park?
So we have two, you know, we have the two garage spaces. Each driveway can accommodate an additional two cars. And then we have the 12, uh, 12 cars, you know, that are on the common driveway. We also talked about the pedestrian access, you know? If you were, if you lived in this development, right? I, I used to live in a very similar development adjacent to a shopping center. And, you know, occasionally we had a Christmas party. And when we had that Christmas party, we would work with the adjacent shopping center because they'd be able to park. And we actually have a pedestrian connection rate to Eagle Village that if that person was having that unusual party, that they would be able to, you know, coordinate with the shopping center, you know, theoretically.
12 cars is, in fairness, probably like my family's Thanksgiving. So I imagine that that would happen on a fairly frequent basis. And Mr. Rice, maybe this is a question for you, but will the township be doing anything to ensure that there isn't significant overflow cars parking on the residential streets within the neighborhood? I'm fine with the shopping center, of course, but as someone who lives on a cul-de-sac and it's already a street where we frequently have overflow traffic parking, is there anything that we're going to be planning as far as mitigating that?
Well, until the plan gets through the planning process and the Planning Commission, I would encourage you to come to the meeting when this comes to the Planning Commission and ask those questions. That's where that, you know, the rubber's going to meet the road in front of the Planning Commission and the details will be hashed out.
All right.
Any other?
I do. Yeah, my other question is around community impact. And apologies, I don't remember exactly how Mr. Brosman phrased the question. But I believe it was his last question to you around community impact and there not being anything beyond the normal impact to the, the broader community. And I'm just wondering if you can elaborate on, on what you mean by the impact and, um, and what really you're speaking to in that sense.
So what that's in reference to is that this development does not have any unusual impact that a 41-unit townhouse development would have.
And what kind of impact is that? What kind of impact are you referring to that a 41-unit development would have?
Really anything that, that it would have, whether it be traffic, you know, you know, how people use these townhouses, right? They're going to use them as residences. You know, however that is going to be used and, and impact the surrounding area.
When you say residences, do you believe these will be used as people's primary residences?
I, I couldn't speculate, but I can't speculate that they're not going to be, you know, that they could be primary, they could not be primary. I don't, I don't know.
In your experience with other developments like this and of their size, what has been the typical occupancy rate?
They, I'm not sure I understand the question. They have typically sold out and people occupy the, the buildings. I'm not sure what you mean by occupancy.
As in like number of occupants, I'm sorry, just to clarify. So I recognize that you can't tell us what you think the number of occupants would be within this development. But can you share, based off of your experience in other developments, what number of occupants has looked like?
Everyone's unique. I can't tell you how many people, just like I couldn't tell you how many people are going to live in the house next to you.
Well, you could certainly tell me what some of the developments occupants are. I mean, that, those are facts. That's not a speculation. It's how many residents live in a development of this size that you've worked on.
I have no idea.
Mr. Rice, this is Commissioner Borowski. Can I just interject? Have, are the residents able to access all of the information with regards to this? Because this information is in the impact study. I have it right here in front of me.
All of the, all of those documents will be available and are available at the Township building. So we can make arrangements to make sure there's paper copies. I think some of it's there electronically. I don't know what's been posted on the website. So, you know, that's, there's a lot of information available on this.
If we could make that a little more accessible to the residents, and I, I don't know if I'm out of turn to answer this, but in looking at the population impacts on the impact study, it says an estimated 91 residents, including nine school-aged children. So that is what is in the impact study that I am looking at.
And, and there is going to be testimony from someone on behalf of the applicant to go over that. So, you know, that'll be addressed with another witness.
Do you know which witness that is?
Georgia, would that be your planner that's going to testify to that?
We, um, we had another planner. I wasn't going to call him as part of my case, but if the issue, if it's being brought into issue, I may make him available and have him testify at a future hearing.
Well, you have an impact statement. Who's going to, who's going to testify to that?
Well, it was a collaborative effort, so a lot of the people that are testifying will cover it. The part that Commissioner Borowski was speaking about, if that's being brought into issue, we had a, another planner help us with that and we could, we could have his testimony at a future hearing.
Okay. And the, the reports are available for anybody that wants to get copies of any of the documents or plans. That's all available. So I guess Commissioner Borowski, is that acceptable? I mean, I think there's, you know, if folks are interested, they're going to have to make a request. I don't think it needs to be a right-to-know request, just a request for, you know, whatever documents that folks are interested in at the Township building.
Is there a reason that it couldn't be online?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Jack Larkin. Is there a reason that those documents just couldn't be put on the Township website?
I think anything that's been submitted tonight and anything that was filed with the application, all of that is, can go on the website.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I, I had thought that it all was on the website. I thought, thought that I saw that. But to the extent that it's not, I mean, request that we upload it all.
Okay.
Perhaps, and this Commissioner Borowski again, perhaps it, um, it could be made more prominent in some way.
Okay. So where we're at, are we done with it? That, that, it sounds like we're going to, whatever we have that's been filed or submitted tonight will be posted on the Township's website.
This, I'm sorry, this is Tara Neal speaking again, since I was the last person to have questions. I would just like to request that the witness be brought forth for the impact statement.
Okay. The, Mr. Brosman will have to address that. It sounds like that there's going to be questions regarding that. But I would suggest, Ms. Neal, that you get a copy of that. It might answer your questions, it might not. But let's finish with your questions. But let's finish with your questions now. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more resident that sent me an email, Nicole Moore. And she's on Eagle Road, at 315 Eagle Road. Ms. Moore, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions, first of all. You live how close to the property?
I am at 315 Eagle Road, which is about four houses from the forest parcel, some within a quarter mile.
And you're near Ms. Neal, is that correct?
Yeah, our driveways face each other, so we are.
Mr. Brozeman, are you going to object to Ms. Moore also? Because you've objected to everybody on, I thought, Eagle and West. Do you have any objection to Ms. Moore?
I'd like to know one for the record, just for the similar reasons, to be consistent with the others. That's a little further away.
Okay, but do you have an objection to Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I was objecting for the record on a similar grounds.
I'm sorry, I didn't, okay. All right, Ms. Moore, you'll be permitted to participate as a party. Do you have questions?
I do, thank you.
And please spell your name, Ms. Moore, first and last.
Yep, it's Nicole, N-I-C-O-L-E. And the last name is Moore, M-O-O-R-E. Thank you. And my husband Brent, B-R-E-N-T, also is joining me in questions, if that's needed.
Okay.
So, yeah, I appreciate the testimony and I appreciate the time spent on this. Our concerns are, you know, traffic, which I know will be tabled to another discussion, but also parking and runoff from the streets. There's still some impact, though less than some of the other neighbors and residents that are on the line today. So I wanted to start with, if we could go back to that plan from a parking standpoint, if we could talk through Mr. Lambert, or if you're able to kind of talk to the, how many feet of curbing will be between each driveway?
Within our development? It varies. You know, there will be areas, we weren't, you know, we're not counting any of that as parking. We have the two garage spaces, two in the driveway, and the 12 other surface spaces off the internal roads.
Okay. How much, how much curbing?
In the development, I'm not sure I understand the question.
How much curbing is between the driveways in the development?
It varies all the way around the development, but there's roughly 20 feet between most.
Okay. And do you know what the minimum distance a car must allow as a buffer between the driveways? Just trying to get a feeling for how many cars can park in between on the road there.
No, we were not counting any of the parking, you know, on the road there. We were counting just the spaces, so we were, you know, we were not counting any of those spaces.
Thank you. I did have some question around the material used for the driveway current, like current state. Are those driveways concrete or are they asphalt, stone?
It'll be a solid surface. I don't think it's been designed at this point about selecting the material.
But currently, in the land that exists today?
Most of it's paved.
Okay. But what will go in has not been determined?
For each individual driveway, whether it's, you know, asphalt, concrete, or pavers, it hasn't been selected, but it will be some hard surface.
Okay. And then, in your, like, just in your opinion, is there a difference in water runoff between crushed stone driveway and concrete or asphalt driveways?
Most ordinances view crushed stone the same that they would as a paved surface, because once the cars start driving on it, it compacts the surface.
Okay. And will any impervious material be used for the road that will be that loop within the development? I think I know the answer.
That's built to township standard and which is a impervious pavement.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay. That completes the residents, the other party's questions. Mr. Brozeman, do you have any more questions for this witness?
Just a couple of follow-ups. I don't think I have many. Rob, one of the questioners asked about the sewer capacity and raised a question of some off, out-of-township potential sewer issues. You mentioned that you were able to get capacity for other projects in Radnor Township. Did those projects that you ever, that you got capacity for, did they utilize the same route, if you will, and the same systems that the questioner was asking about?
Yes, the downstream sections, maybe not the immediate sections of sewer, but those aren't the issues. It was the further downstream, but yes, they went through the same system.
So whatever those issues were, you were aware of other developments in the township that did get capacity after going through the sewer planning process, correct?
That is correct.
And one of the parties asked about some of the rows of units closest to Grant Lane. Do those units meet all of the buffer requirements and setback requirements?
Yes, they do.
That's all I had at this time.
Okay, so.
John, can I just ask, at a good time, maybe before we start with other questions?
A break.
Yes, please.
Yeah, that's where I was, exactly where I was going. Our court reporter has been at it for almost three hours here. So what I would suggest is that we take about a 10-minute break. It's now, what time is it, 9:12. Let's come back at 9:20. And we'll reconvene with board questions. And I'll go through and call on each of the board members to ask questions of the witness. So let's take about 10 minutes, come back around 9:20 or so, and then we'll continue on. Is that okay, Norma?
That's great, that's great. Thanks, John.
All right. So anyone that wants to stay on, fine, otherwise, I'm going to stop my video. And I'll be back. Okay. Norma, are you on?
John?
Yes.
Did you talk to me?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I had to, my iPad was dying. I thought it was charging, so I had to get off and get on my phone, but.
Do you have any idea how long you're planning on going tonight?
Well, I'm going to recommend no later than 10 o'clock. I hope to get, you know, any further questions done.
That's fine. I'm just thinking not till, you know, midnight and 1 o'clock.
No, no, three and a half hours is usually enough.
Yeah.
It looks like a lot of people got off.
That's what happens during breaks.
Let me see if my phone will charge. Yeah, I'm having it. Okay. Hopefully my phone will last a half hour. On charge. Okay, are we ready to go, Mr. Brozeman?
I'm here, turning my video on.
Okay.
I'm back.
And Mr. Lambert's here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so. Well, what I would propose we do is the commissioners will each have an opportunity to ask Mr. Lambert questions. And I think once we complete that, I think the hearing will be done. Three and a half hours is usually the limit on these. And then we'll have to, maybe not tonight, but we'll have to pick another date, Mr. Brozeman, to continue this into January. So let me start with the commissioners' questions. The Ward 1 Commissioner, Mr. Larkin, do you have any questions for Mr. Lambert?
Just one. Mr. Lambert, good evening. I have one question for you. It has two parts. I suspect that you've answered much of it in the past, but I'd like to get something concisely on the record here. You testified on direct that the conditional use plan, as it is now proposed, would have a lesser impact on public health, safety, and welfare in the purportedly by right sketch plan you've offered. Can you please tell me, first, each of the distinct impacts that you considered in reaching that conclusion? And second, a brief explanation of how you reached your conclusion with respect to each?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if I'll be able to enumerate them all, and I'm sure I'll miss one or two. But I think the first one is if you go to, what was it, exhibit? The by right plan, Burn, there we A12. And we'll flip back and forth between A12 and A11, just to talk about those impacts. So looking at the by right plan, I think one thing that's obvious is all the individual driveways. So looking at the by right plan, I think one thing that's obvious is all the individual driveways that are accessing the surrounding roads, and if we go back and forth, so go back to A11, we only have the two access points onto Stratford Road, Stratford Avenue, which was similar to the by right plan, and so I think just the controlled access out to the public roads is a benefit of the density modification plan. I believe that the, if you look at this A11 exhibit, and you look at, let's call it for lack of a better term, a green belt that goes around Stratford and Eagle along both frontages, is we really have that, you know, landscape creation along both of those frontages. We, sticking with the green, is along the residential properties on Grant, which is on the left-hand side, we have a buffer that is all the way along that property line, where if you go back to A12, pardon me, A12, you don't have that, you're gonna have driveways coming out, you're gonna be, you're really eliminating that, and you're really seeing a lot more impact, visual impact to those surrounding areas. Stormwater, I believe that the proposed system being managed by an HOA will have a better management of it than having 31, you know, potentially 31 individual owners, each having their own stormwater management system. So we talked about the access, we talked about the greening, I believe tree preservation, Mr. Panzak will talk about this a little bit more, I believe that the density modification plan can provide more or a better tree preservation plan. Let me see here. I believe that the pedestrian experience, although you'll have sidewalks on the by right plan, I think that the density modification along Stratford and Eagle, the sidewalks aren't interrupted by the driveway, so you'll kind of have the continuous sidewalk. Let me look at the plan. Yeah, I think those are, I think those are the highlights of what it is, and, oh, I'm sorry, we have the open space, I missed a big one, we have the 15% open space on the density modification plan that we're providing, where the by right plan does not have any open space, and so you would not have that requirement with the standard plan, so I think that those are really the the highlights there.
Commissioner Larkin, anything else?
I have nothing else for you, thank you.
Commissioner Booker, any questions?
Yes, I have a few, number one, looking at the plans, I know this isn't land development, but I'm looking at, I noticed the parking width is shown as nine feet, shouldn't that be nine and a half feet for parking spaces with?
I believe it is nine and a half, I have to double check that, yes.
I noted that, I call this a significant material change from the previous dead end road there, Road A, now we have a drive, a new driveway that's there accessing those final two bottom right houses, so, how did that? How was, how was it decided that that change was going to be presented to this body tonight and not before tonight?
We received the Gilmore review letter, took a look at the review letter, and one of the comments was that those final two units, which had a road there, it was a dead end, it really just serviced those two units, we made that a shared driveway versus a road to address the Gilmore letter.
When was the Gilmore letter received?
I have to look at, I believe it was A6. I believe it was, it was written on November 16th.
John, you and I corresponded, but we do expect to have a planning commission review, I think that that was a requirement for a conditional use hearing, so I want to confirm that that will, that is planned, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the planning commission, I believe, is gonna have this on their agenda December 21st, to make a recommendation.
I don't see any steep slopes identified, I see a topo, some of the topo information, are there, where are the steep slopes on the site, and shouldn't they be identified?
The, there really aren't any steep slopes on the bulk of the property, there are some, I believe, within the right of way along Eagle Road, that was kind of cut in with Eagle Road, but the remaining of the property, you know, the, kind of the main tract area does not have any steep slopes.
Even along the left-hand side there, behind the houses that are currently existing?
I'm sorry.
The left-hand side of the plant?
The left-hand.
Left side of your plant, right there.
So behind the, the.
In that area, that area, yeah.
The Grant Lane property?
Yeah.
I don't believe there are any steep slopes in that area.
And the grade does go from Stratford Avenue down towards Forest Lane and Fairfield in that area?
Yes, there's a portion of the property that drains to Stratford Avenue, kind of a, let's call it the front yard area, that currently does. We're collecting it, and then the, kind of the low part of the site is out by Forest and Fairfield, out on the lower left.
Okay. I, I've heard you say that the, there's open space and 15%. How are you calculating that 15%? It looks like really the only usable open space is in the center of the site, are are you counting areas between the buildings as open space, or is there more than than I see here, because most of it just seems kind of ancillary, are you counting all of that? Anything that's not developed, you're counting as open space?
There's actually, we've, I think conservatively calculated, I think we could actually probably count a lot more into the, into the required open space, we haven't really counted anything, or most of the areas all along the frontage, nor along the Eagle Village area, which I actually think qualify. We've counted two main areas, one was between, let's see, it's units 21 and 35 down to 26, 27, you know, 26 through 29, and the area of green adjacent to the parallel parking spaces in the, in the, along the, along the loop road, and then areas surrounding units 12 through 15, both in the, in the back and the sides of that unit, go to the 15%.
So, those areas really don't seem to me to be open space in that, when we envision open space, that's kind of parkland area, those are kind of ancillary areas, so you expect that you'll have kids from all over this neighborhood going behind in that back corner and playing football or baseball, that that will be an area that people will use for dogs, and other recreation, and in that little corner area around the, by the parking spots, those are designed to be used for recreation? Are they really big enough for that?
They were, they were used for the common open space and the definition thereof.
Will you notify the people in those bottom left-hand units that they will, that they're, that they'll need to allow people to be in their backyards?
Yep, let's, if you go to sheet A7, Burn, we can talk about the.
Mr. Booker, this is Mr. Brosman. Our office would likely be writing the planned community documents, and the plans and the planned community documents, and there's other things required, public offering statements and things like those would give notification to all the residents and all the buyers of what the different components of the community are, including the open space, the common elements, the limited common elements, all of that would be very clear to people.
All right, and this document does show the common open space. I think it's very important that everyone understand, and the people on Grant understand as well, the common open space in that back corner, and also around the turn right there, on the other side of the road from where your pointer is. They seem very small, so it's not really usable common space, it seems to me, but in any event, I do have the calculation, which is my question, so thank you. Going on to stormwater, you mentioned, and my first question was, is a stormwater, well, actually, no, it ties in with the open space, almost all of this open space has underground stormwater retention. That, there's a lot of underground structure, the underground structures will be infiltrating as well as reducing rate and, and volume, or are they simply just to detain, detain the water and and not have any infiltration into the groundwater?
They have infiltration, so it was both.
Oh. Hang on. Am I back?
Yeah, you're back.
All right, sorry about that, I, my earphones ran out.
You sound a little different.
Yeah, sorry about that, I had to switch, switch, switch pieces here. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question there, I got lost when I had to.
All of, all of these open areas that are depicted here have groundwater retention and infiltration beds underneath all those areas.
So those systems were, your question was rate and volume, right, so we're doing both rate and volume in those systems.
And also, you are infiltrating, so there is a net increase in the discharge from the site from current conditions, and stormwater though, to the surface, isn't there?
No, we're infiltrating, you know, both, we're reducing both the rate and volume leaving the site.
However, because you're increasing the impervious from 24 to 44%, there will be a greater overall discharge of surface stormwater to the surrounding stormwater systems, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, we're reducing the rates and the volume for the, leaving the site. So we have to look at, as part of our NPDS permit, we're gonna be looking at, you know, points of interest, and we look at the points of interest, and we will be reducing the rates and volume, you know, to that point of interest.
You said that the HOA will maintain all of these underground stormwater systems. That seems to me to be a big ask 20 years from now for a group of volunteer HOA administrators. How will we ensure that these structures will be properly maintained?
They, as part of our approvals, and very similar to, quite frankly, every project in the township that now gets approved that builds a stormwater system, is that these systems are approved, and when you're over an acre of disturbance, which we will be, we need an NPDS permit, and as part of that NPDS permit, we will have operation and maintenance, you know, of those systems as part of a recorded document.
So basically, the answer to my question is, we're gonna rely on the homeowners to do that, and the township will have no responsibility for that. So, again, my concern would be that 20 years from now, or 25 years from now, these, maintenance of these underground structures will be forgotten, they'll get clogged and they won't operate properly, because the people in charge simply don't have the sophistication or knowledge to maintain, especially these large areas. You have any response to that?
Is there a question?
Your thoughts on that statement, do you disagree with it?
I believe that they have an obligation to maintain them, and, and like, we work with many individual homeowners, let alone an HOA, we also have worked with HOAs, but even individual homeowners that have stormwater systems on their site, we have worked with them on observing and monitoring their stormwater systems, and so I believe it's up to, you know, kind of the individual owner or the HOA, so yes, an HOA has the capacity, many of them hire management companies, which then bring in professionals, and now you'd be able to bring in a professional that split over 41 property owners versus having one single property owner be responsible to bring in the professional, so, yes, I believe an HOA has the capacity, in a similar fashion that they, you know, maintain their roads and landscape.
Well, just as an aside, most of the HOAs that I'm familiar with over the last few years have come to the township more and more often, requesting that the township take over all of their maintenance of roads, trash, leaves, and other things, so, I think we have a difference in experience. Next question, exceeding, you said that you, that this system exceeds the stormwater requirements in all respects. Does it exceed in all respects, just some respects, or?
So we exceeded, the two main metrics of the system are the rate and the volume requirements, and we've exceeded both of those metrics.
And so, review again, how you've exceeded those?
So the, as I previously testified to, is the, and I don't have the exhibit up in front of me, but it was, you know, roughly, we were cutting the 100-year storm, I believe it was roughly 20 cubic feet per second was permitted, and we were releasing only 10, right, so we were cutting that, that roughly in half, right, I'm rounding off the numbers, and then the infiltration volume requirement, I think, you know, we were roughly doubling the infiltration requirement volume for that volume, so, yes, we were exceeding the two main metrics of how the stormwater was measured.
Mentioned you were allowed 20 cubic, what was the measurement that was allowed 20, and what was the the reference that would, the calculation would allow 20? And you got it to 10?
It was, I believe, the 100-year storm, and it's measuring cubic feet per second.
So you're, the calculation was you're permitted to discharge 20 cubic feet per second for a 100-year storm?
Correct.
And you're, you're, you're going to be discharging 10 cubic feet per second for a 100-year storm?
Roughly, yes, correct.
So, doesn't that mean that there's still gonna be flooding at 100-year storm, especially to the adjacent areas?
We're reducing the amount of runoff from our site.
But you're not saying that you would eliminate flooding?
I am not saying that I can control all off-site runoff which contributes to that flood, I'm saying that on our site, we are reducing the amount of runoff leaving our site.
Well, you, you said, no, you said you're, you're, you're discharging less than you are permitted to discharge under the regulation, that's different, so again.
So the regulation doesn't let us permit any, to discharge any more than we currently do, and in some instances, for some storms, it's an over control, and so what we are doing is, is reducing the amount of runoff leaving our site.
And where's that measured? Is it just an overall calculation for the site, or are there specific points that that is measured?
We look at it as specific points where the, where that water's currently leaving the site. the site.
So where's the reduction in water that's leaving the site?
We looked at it, the area that I'm referring to is the, where we're connecting on Forest Lane, is where we're, where all that water gets to now, is down on that corner of Forest Lane, and that's what we're comparing to.
Okay, so, but there still will be water leaving from that site? And your contention is that it's going to be less water than currently with only those two old houses there? With 41 new houses, you're going to have less water leaving that site than with the current gravel driveways and two old houses? On five acres?
So.
And half the impervious.
Can I object for the record? Some of the, the points in the question are not accurate, the size of the property and things like that? Can we make it accurate?
Mr. Brosman, Mr. Booker is not a party, he's one of the hearing officers. I don't know that you get to object to his questions. Mr. Booker, there's five more commissioners waiting to ask questions, so I would just, let's try to move this along. You're making the points you want to make, and Mr. Lambert's answering them, but.
Well, again, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand, the representation is that there will be less stormwater leaving, what is, what's the, what's the acreage of the, this site? I thought it was five, five acres, or what is it, seven acres?
Yeah, it's over seven acres.
Seven acres, so seven acres today, three parcels, two, two old houses and some outbuildings.
Right, and he's, he's answered your question, so you take.
And he's saying that with 41 new houses and double the impervious, there's going to be less water leaving the site. I just want to reiterate that.
That's what he's saying, so that's your answer. So what else do you have to ask him?
Well, you said it, he didn't say it, so explain to me, just again, I want to understand, and I want the assurance from the engineer that that's what he's saying, because I want to understand that.
Mr. Lambert, can you answer that question?
Yeah, so, so what I've been saying is, is that the rate of runoff leaving that site in that area was the, was the rate that we talked about. And so we were reducing that by half in the 100-year storm. You know, we can look at the other storms, but I use the 100-year storm as the example. And so we were reducing that rate of runoff leaving the site in that corner, because we've installed these stormwater management basins to control that water, is going to be reduced as it leaves the site.
And that reduction is, for, that's a rate per, and, and so how long is that? So you reduce the rate, rate cubic feet per minute, but it, it goes on for longer than it would today, correct?
In that instance, yes, it may go on for longer.
So for a given storm, it may not be less, it may be more, just reduce, just spread out over more time?
So, right, the, mentioned before, we have two major metrics, right, is rate and volume. The code requires, you know, rate controls up at the 100-year storm, they look at the increase in runoff from a two-year storm, is your infiltration requirement, taking all of that, being able to control it, is what the codes require, and that's how the stormwater gets modeled.
And you do have the infiltration, and you're not planning on, so you've said you've done perk tests, and there's not going to be a waiver requested for infiltration on the site?
That should make you happy, Commissioner Booker.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, I, it's, John, I am neutral on this, I'm, you know, I don't believe in granting waivers. If we do want to grant waivers, we should simply change the requirement.
Right.
You also said, you also said that you actually surpass the infiltration requirement that's in the current ordinance, is that correct?
I say we are surpassing the amount of infiltration we're providing.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, say it again?
We're exceeding the amount of infiltration required by the code.
And what are the measurements of the infiltration that are required, and what are you providing?
We're, the, it's a, it's a cubic foot analysis for the increase in runoff from a two-year storm. We model the preceding condition, we have to consider some of the, so even though we have the 24% impervious existing, we actually have to discount some of that back to a meadow condition before we actually run the calculations, and then we come up with a volume. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I believe it was roughly double the volume we were actually infiltrating back into the, into the ground with our proposed system. So if, if, if two was required, we're closer to four, but we were exceeding it by a significant amount.
Couldn't you also exceed it by a significant amount with a, by right R4 compliant layout?
Potentially, yes.
You said that you're permitted to up to about 45% of impervious cover. Is that under the, what, what provision allows 45? That's, that's not R4, that would be what?
That is, under the density modification provisions, permit 5% in excess of what's permitted in the underlying zoning.
Okay, so 5% in excess of R4? Back to the, these, these underground discharge, recharge areas, and all those areas are underneath the open spaces, aren't those open spaces going to be wet for a longer time because of all the infiltration and the water stored under these open spaces? Isn't that going to be mushy ground? Okay, go, further on this, you said that this 41 townhouses has less impact than 31 single-family homes. And Jack touched, Jack asked you to go through that, and I, my question was, less impact, how so? So you said buffer, number one, especially along Grant Lane, but wouldn't a single-family residence, the single-family homes in your other sketch, all those single-family homes would have a back buffer along their back property line, presumably whatever the homeowner would put up? So isn't that a wash between the two plans?
No, the density modification has a 25-foot required landscape buffer, which has to be, you know, maintained. The single-family residents can build a shed three feet off the property line and, and have a, you know, a yard and everything else right up to the property line, so no, they're not equivalent.
Well, again, land development, that's something we could negotiate, couldn't we?
It's permitted under the R4.
You said that the, that there would be better tree preservation, and that that made it better. Why would 41 homes be better, and also, all the open space areas there, that you have to tear up that ground and put in those underground cisterns and infiltration? Why do you think that there'd be better tree preservation when you're building this 41-unit layout versus 31 single-family?
Will be, there'll be additional testimony talking about the, the tree preservation, but we were able to preserve additional, more trees with the 41-unit layout, keeping the open space areas, providing trees along Stratford Avenue, down into that common open space, some of the additional ones along the, the, what is that, the Western property line. So there were advantages that we were able to show, and there'll be future exhibits to highlight that better.
Wouldn't, you said that this would be less, have less impact, but when, if you had 31 houses, you might only have 60, 60 residents or 60 cars, and this is going to be, by your own calculations, 90 cars?
Rice.
Wouldn't, wouldn't?
Excuse me, Mr. Rice.
Yeah.
I feel, I feel like Commissioner Booker is cross-examining my witness, I don't feel like he's acting as the, a judge here.
So.
I'm going to note an objection.
Commissioner Booker.
I'm asking a question.
You're not, you're not an advocate.
I'm not an advocate, I'm asking, I'm trying to understand the testimony.
He's asking questions that are in the nature of a cross-examination, hostile manner.
No, this is probative of the testimony given, that's all it is, George. So you, you, the testimony was, the testimony was that this is less impact, so I'm asking questions to understand.
The legal standard for conditional uses also, that it has to have, it meets the standards, and as far as impacts, people have to prove, without speculating, that it has a greater impact than the typical development of this kind. We were also putting forth testimony about an R4 plan, but this plan complies. So I don't think we should be into legal arguments and cross-examination here.
Well, again, George, this is, this is not cross-examination. Your, your witness said that this is less impact, and I am, I'm exploring how, how he came to that conclusion, and that's what he testified to, to this, to this body and to the public. So isn't this more impact in, because there's more cars?
Mr. Rice asked those questions in a way that wasn't cross-examination.
It's not cross-examination, all right?
Commissioner Booker did.
If there's, if there's more, if there's more cars and more people in 41 homes than in 31 homes, isn't that a greater impact to public infrastructure such as roads, schools, and other sanitary sewer and other facilities?
I would defer to other witnesses about some of the other impacts that you mentioned there. As far as the stormwater goes, which we talked about extensively, I.
Well, I didn't ask about stormwater, I said sanitary sewer, traffic, and schools.
And so, as I said, I'm going to defer to other people for, for, for schools, I'm going to defer to other people for traffic, right? I talked about stormwater, right? And so the stormwater, I believe that this is a, a superior plan to the other one. We talked about the driveway access, that we have a lot of additional driveways with a traditional R4 plan, that this was a superior plan in that respect. I'm not sure, are there things that I've testified to that you're, you're questioning there?
Well, even on the driveways, my, my concern with 90 cars potentially coming in from those two points on the Stratford Ave, that there would be less impact to spread out the egress and exgress, the exit and the entrance all into the development if you had more points. And so I, I, I don't take that as, I, it seems to me that it would be, that many cars, it's easier to have more points than, than, than the two, so. Last two things, last two things.
Yeah, we, we need to wrap it up, Commissioner Booker, because.
Yeah, flooding, flooding.
It's got to be two short things, or we're going to move on.
Flooding, flooding in the area will still occur after this, this will not stop flooding in the, in the area and in the neighborhoods by, with the system, for 100-year flood and other storms, correct?
We are reducing the amount of runoff leaving the subject property.
And you said that this meets the parking requirements with only 12 guest spots. How does it meet the requirements? What is specifically met?
There's, I believe it's 0.25 space, yeah, it's 0.25 spaces per unit, so it's for every four units, you need one guest parking space.
No further questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Solicitor Rice. In the interest of time, and the lack of needing to hear myself talk, I will yield back my time.
Thank you. Commissioner Borowski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rice, and thank you, Mr. Brosman and Mr. Lambert for your time and for your testimony this evening, Mr. Lambert. I just have a couple of questions, because some of my questions, I think, would be better suited for some of the future witnesses that will be appearing. But my, one, I have a couple of questions in regards to the sidewalks that you'll be putting, which seem to run, I guess, on Eagle Road and then down Stratford. Will those sidewalks be connecting up with, are there, are there existing sidewalks that they can connect with? One of the things I noted, and some of my questions are, I've really keyed in on some of the things in the impact study, you note that, you know, this being so walkable and a walkable space will help with the economics and the business and things like that. So tell me how those sidewalks are going to connect up with either exists, with things that exist, so that people can easily access those areas and be safe, because those roads are certainly heavily traveled.
So the sidewalk on Eagle Road will connect, right at the driveway of the shopping center on the opposite side of that driveway, there is a existing walkway that we, you know, be able to connect to. Out the other end of that, at Stratford, there is no additional sidewalk going down Stratford, but we have provided across the front edge of the property.
Okay, and then just quickly, a couple of questions about the, the common space. And when you call that community green or common space, is that going to be accessible to anyone in the community, or is that going to be closed to the, the immediate residents of the development?
This is for the residential development.
Okay, so it, that, so this, this development will not be open for other people to walk through or to access, to use that cut through to get to spread Eagle Village, things like that?
So the, it is a private property, but there's going to be nothing that will preclude someone from walking, you know, down the walkway, or is it a, a public sidewalk? No, but it, you know, given that it's 41, you know, individual owners there, I believe that that, you know, is a, from a practical perspective, somebody could walk down that sidewalk and go through, there's not going to be like a card system to get through to the property.
Do you know if there's a plan to dedicate those roads back to the township, or will they remain in control of the HOA?
The internal road is HOA.
So they, you will not be asking to dedicate those roads back to the township?
Correct.
Okay, and then my, my last question really goes towards the, the number of cars, and I know a lot of people have asked that, and I did note in the impact study, you do estimate that, or someone does, I don't know that it's you, Mr. Lambert, and if you can't answer this, I'm certainly glad to wait for a subsequent witness, but that there'll be 91, an estimate of 91 people moving and living in, in this development. If each one of them has two cars, that's 180 cars, correct? Is that what you're estimating when it comes to cars coming in and out of that?
I'll defer to the traffic engineer about traffic, and.
Okay.
There's, so that'll be the better, if you're questioning.
Okay, then I will save that question for then. That is really all I have.
Commissioner Mulroney?
Hi, thank you very much. Thank you for this very thorough presentation. I want to thank all of the residents who have come out and asked some really probing questions, I appreciate that. I don't have many more to add for this witness, but I would like to talk about the population density. So we've talked about cars, we've talked about how many houses, but I don't have a sense of the size of the house and the number of the bedrooms. So can you speak to how big these townhouses will be? I had heard earlier testimony that they were two-story, although I looked at some draft architectural drawings just of the fronts, it looked like three-story. So what is the, the house size, and how many bedrooms would be in each house?
I don't know the answer to the number of bedrooms, you know, I can probably figure out a footprint. We really look at the footprints, so I can't really say how big it's going to be inside, we're not the architects, or know the size of each unit.
And um, are we going to be hearing from them as another witness, Mr. Brosman?
Um, we can get you some information on that. Um, on the, I guess you're asking of the floor area of the units besides the footprint.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, uh, my, what I'm trying to get at, I'll explain why I'm asking the question, is that if it's a two-story house with some living space and one bedroom, you're, you're going to market these to um singles or couples. If it is a three-story with four bedrooms, you've now got a family of five to six. Um, that is a big difference on um pedestrian traffic and activity in that neighborhood. So I would, yes, very much like to have information about the size of the houses and how many occupants on average, they could maximum.
I'm sure we could provide that to you with a, in the future with a, another witness.
Excellent. Okay, then I have no other questions for you tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner Farhi.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll be brief. Most of my questions hopefully are going to be one-word, yes, no answers. I do want to make a couple of follow-ups on, follow-up questions on Ms. uh Maroni and what she said. Uh, I guess first question I have is, are you asking for any waivers so far? Yes or no?
No.
Great. Um, is, uh, is this area built in a floodplain?
No.
So there's no flood, it's not above, it's not below, it's flat level land. Is that correct? Great. Um, you're telling me that there's less than a 2% differential uh in the amount of impervious land uh there. Is that correct?
Hmm, no.
You said it's about 45 and you're at 43.6, so that would be 1.
Forty-five permitted.
And you're at 43.6%, so there's a difference of less than 2%, so it'd be about 1.4%, correct?
Underneath what's permitted.
Okay, so that doesn't give you a lot of room if you needed to put something extra in, am I correct? Something, uh, some kind of building, substation, uh, this um stormwater, it doesn't work, you need to put a pump there.
One, one and a half percent of seven and a half acres is actually a fair amount of impervious.
Which is, which is how much?
Determine that, hang on one minute. Sure, yeah.
A whole thousand square feet?
I like the size of one.
Almost, almost 5,000 feet.
Okay, alright, fair enough. Um, okay, um, this, this part of the township is suscess- susceptible to flooding. Um, so is, is, so basically what are you, you putting in? It's, is it um rain gardens, is it just?
A large underground uh stormwater system.
Okay. Um, alright, now in regards to the private road, where, uh, where are the utilities going to be held? Underneath or above?
Uh, underneath, everything will be underground.
Everything's underneath, including electric cable, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the perimeter, um, so the Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road, you'll be putting a sidewalk there as well?
That is correct.
And the HOA will be responsible for removal and everything, it's no removal on everything else?
Main groups, yes.
Um, trash removal, is it going to be private trash or public trash?
I believe private, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. Uh, and then the access for first responders, you can get a fire truck in there, no problem?
No problem at all. The roads, the internal roads designed at township standard.
Right, and they're going to be able to get behind some of those houses if they needed to for some odd reason?
Uh, yeah, typically like they would just a regular house, you know, they can get around, walk around them.
Um, and then sewer and the capacity. So there's not going to be a problem with hookups and there's plenty of capacity. And, and I know that you made mention, you made mention prior, um, you know, with other developments you done. To me, that's irrelevant. I only care about this development and this development that you're representing now. There's not going to be a problem with hookup or capacity, am I correct?
Uh, the, we've been getting um capacity released to uh, to projects. So yes, we anticipate that capacity will be released to this project.
Okay. And school buses, so school buses can go around there if they need to, especially for the little ones, uh, elementary school, especially kindergarten?
Yeah, that would be up to the school district of how they, of how they, where the, the route is, but the road would have capacity for it.
Okay. Um, so then this is getting back to Maura's issue, and, and she brought up something great that I really want to touch on. So I'm going to ask you this, this is um, this is not a 55 uh plus development, am I correct? You're not going to restrict?
That is correct.
So you're going to be restriction for college, you know, can, you rent out to college kids?
I believe they have to inform with the ordinance.
So probably not a lot of college kids, fair to say.
That's what I would assume.
Right. Um, so getting back to what, what Maura, uh, or pardon me, Commissioner Maroni was talking about, is the amount of bedrooms. And that's something that I am interested as well because, um, saying that there's only going to be nine school-aged kids with 40 homes, um, you know, if there are four bedrooms, five bedrooms, you are marketing to families or potential families. Um, that puts a stress on our school system. Are you aware of that or not? I mean, if you, the 40.
Area of expertise, so I'm not the right person to answer the questions.
Okay, so will there be someone to talk about? I know that Commissioner Borowski spoke about, um, you would have someone that could speak to that in that plan. Will you be, uh?
Yes, um, Commissioner, if I could interject, uh, this is George Brosman. Um, the person who provided that information for the development impact statement, we will, he's a planner. We will have him testify at a future hearing.
Okay, so getting back to what Commissioner uh Maroni uh made issue with, is um, you know, how is it going to be marketed? And you're going to say, well, we don't know, we're just putting it up for sale. Well, it's not going to be 55-plus development, it's not going to be geared toward college kids. Uh, it's probably going to be geared, geared toward families with multiple bedrooms. Um, so based on that, I think it's important um that there is some kind of analysis when it comes to our schools and the overcrowding of our schools, because you're adding 40 new uh, 40 new units. And this looks like a, uh, you know, maybe something that's uh, you know, a, a attractive to, to families starting out. Um, so that's kind of my, my big issue there. Um, to what Commissioner Booker said, I will say this does not seem the open space. I don't know what is defined as open space. If a blade of grass is open space, and bravo, you've done a great job with that. But if it's uh usable o- open space, um, there's very, very little of it. Uh, there may be a, a big track of land.
Commissioner Farhi, do you, do you have a question for the witness?
Yeah, I, 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 is it, what's considered open space? Is that one blade of grass or is that just something that you don't build on?
Uh, it, it's defined in the ordinance, I believe. It, it talks about the, the both views um and use. And I think that this does both of those, is it has, you know, kind of views and use of that open areas.
Okay. And then one more question, and uh hopefully one more question. So if you scroll up the, can you scroll up the? Nope, other way, other way. Down, yep. What's the buffer from the back door? It looks like a little patio area to um, to the, to uh the property line, to the Eagle Village?
Eagle Village. So the. Looking here to, for the right number. Yeah, that was 30, looks like 33 feet is, uh, what's labeled on the exhibit. And that, for the record, that was A11.
Okay, so regarding all the neighbors on all sides, including the um commerce. When it comes to noise and light, there's not going to be any um, any issue where there's a spillage of noise. Um, and, you know, you're, you're behind a, a shopping mall. Um, so they may have events going on later on that, I will tell you, as a member of the township, I don't want to hear, hey, they're being too noisy, and then it's, well, you know what you built behind. Um, have you made any allowances for that as well as lighting? There's not going to be any spillage from uh, from the property line from one side to the other. Can you speak to that, please?
The uh, I believe the next witness is going to, you know, can talk about.
I'm sorry, we lost you.
The next witness is going to talk about, what, what was the rest of that, Rob?
He's frozen. Um, Mr. Panzak will discuss lighting. We did submit a lighting plan, and he will be discussing that. And um, I can highlight to you that it shows that light won't be uh going off of the property.
And noise?
Are you saying noise from the shopping center or noise from these people's homes?
Yeah, noise from these people's homes, it's a high-density area. So these people, um, especially on the um western side are not used to uh 40 new homes, some of them that are, you know, um, attached, you know, attached five, six, seven at a time. So um, you know, just to be, you guys are cognizant of that, that because it is high-density, uh, it's going to be a change in lifestyle for the uh, those neighbors. And it could be a quality of life issue. Are you aware of that?
We don't think there'll be a noise issue. I, and Mr. Panzak can talk about this, but um, I believe there's a fence there, a solid fence. And some of the neighbors at the community meetings asked that that be preserved. So that will be preserved and the buffer area will be enhanced over there. And um, you know, I don't think there'll be any atypical noise that you wouldn't have with a similar unit. I understand what you're saying, there's going to be development here that isn't there today. So I can't say it won't be noisier, but I don't think it'll be unduly noisy and township ordinances will have to be complied with.
And one, I'm sorry, and one more question. If this does affect uh stormwater management downstream, um, is there any uh, are going to be any liability or is there going to be any remediation on the homeowner's uh part uh fixing that? Or is it going to be, we've strictly complied with what is required of us by the township? So the township is now uh on its own and the township would have to make a remediation.
I'm not sure how that question gets answered, but, you know, the.
It's, it's, it's a, uh, let me, let me.
Well, downstream is a lot.
Let me, let me, let me follow up.
John.
Rice, Mr. Rice, let me follow up. Um, as happened in the past, when there's an issue, uh, and they, they get to walk away from it, very similar to what Commissioner Borowski was saying, that streets are, uh, get dilapidated and then get rededicated back to the township. Uh, but we have an idea of how bad stormwater is in Wayne, and it's bad. If they happen to be wrong, if their engineers are wrong, how does it get rectified? Or is it, hey, we did what we had to do, you guys signed off on it, which may be the case.
Right.
Is it um, or, or maybe you don't, maybe you're not going to be able to give me an answer? Or is it um, yeah, you know, there's an issue, it didn't go as planned, who's going to be on the hook? Is it going to be the HOA? Is it going to be the township? It's a simple question for a multi, that to prevent a multimillion-dollar um expense from the township. That's, that's my follow-up.
Let me just, I'll reiterate what I, I think I said earlier, because, I mean, who's going to be liable if there's a major problem down the road is a tough question to answer. But they're going to have to meet whatever the requirements are. They have to enter into a stormwater management agreement uh with the township. And the township has the enforcement power to ensure that they maintain their systems, that they clean their systems, we can inspect their systems. And if it's malfunctioning, we can force them to fix it. If they don't fix it, we can fix it and lean the property. So that's, that's what always.
How can you lean common ground in a, how can you lean common ground in a, who's going to buy it? Uh, yeah, how can you lean common ground in that development? No, no one owns it, the HOA doesn't own it.
Yes, they do.
And, and do they care if the township owns it? What's the township going to do with the odd piece of land?
Well, the township's not going to own it, but we're going to be able to lean the property, the whole property. And the HOA's on the hook for that if the township has to take extraordinary measures to do repair.
I, I mean, it's late, I don't want to argue with you, John, but I don't think that if the township puts a lien on a property, the HOA is going to be gung-ho to get the lien back off the property. It doesn't make much difference.
Well, we, we have other ways to collect that money too. You know, the lien, lien would go in and there's other ways to collect that money.
Alright, that's all I have, but I would like to reserve the right, if I have uh other questions in the future, to ask.
Well, there, there's going to be more witnesses. Let me just uh say at this point, um, and George Brosman, uh, George, let me ask you a question. Commissioner Abel is not here. Um, and I know he intends to participate in this. Do you have any objection to him participating, provided that he reads the transcripts and watches the um, the hearing uh of the first night? I, I fully expect him to be at the next session, whenever we schedule that. So I'm asking, uh, Mr. Brosman, you have, you have any objection to Commissioner Abel participating in that fashion?
No, I don't object to him participating in that fashion.
Okay. And we'll see that he gets copies of the exhibits and uh, and he will have to view the, the video or read the transcript. So um, in terms of tonight, I think that that closes the record. Uh, and we're going to have to pick another date. I would suggest everyone um, look at the first week in January if possible. And uh, Mr. Brosman, let me know in terms of your availability, I would say the first couple of weeks in January. Um, and if the individual commissioners can let me know what dates work, uh, we'll try to s- set something up tomorrow for January. Um, I'm not sure we can pick a date tonight um where everybody's available. Um, I think I, plus I don't, I'm not sure I have Commissioner Abel on the line. So, George, are you okay with that? I think we have an obligation to, to um, you know, hold hearings every 30 or 45 days once the hearings commence. So if we're looking at the first couple of weeks in January, um, maybe, George, you can send me an email with the dates that you're available, and then I'll match them up with the board.
Yeah, I will check with our uh witnesses and come up with some dates. Uh, we appreciate the time that's been given. Of course, we would like to keep this moving along as quickly as we can. Uh, we know the holidays are upon us, so uh, we would like to get moving as fast, or keep it going as fast as we can.
Okay, well, we have a lot of uh schedules to coordinate, but if we could focus on those first two weeks in January right now uh and pick another.
Can I, hi, this is Maura Moroni, Commissioner Moroni, uh, just a quick question. Uh, George, do you have a, an idea of how many more witnesses you are bringing forward um based on questions asked tonight and who you had planned?
Um, we have our landscape architect, our traffic engineer, and uh based on the questions I received this evening, I'm going to bring uh our other planner who had input into the development impact statement. Um, that's what I'm thinking right now. Uh, I'll probably, I have notes, I'll probably go back through questions. So we may decide we have others, but that's what I'm thinking of at the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and um, so if everyone can get me some dates, I will work on this tomorrow and uh try to pick a date where everybody's available. Um, we can start these earlier in the day if the board wants to try to do more than three and a half hours. Usually three and a half hours is enough uh for this type of a hearing. But we're looking at at least one or two more nights of uh testimony on this application. Okay, is there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Rice, may I just follow up on?
I'm sorry, who, who is it?
Commissioner Borowski, I'm sorry, Norma. Um, I just want to follow up, my question earlier about the information being posted for the residents. So there is a section on the website that is called, um, it's on the homepage of the township website, it's called current land development projects. It's on the sidebar. If you go there and click on it, there is all of the information. You'll scroll through, there's a couple of plans that are on there, but all of the information is posted there. Each um, each uh piece of information is separately linked. Um, our staff has done a good job doing that. I apologize for not having seen that earlier. But I would appreciate having, especially this um map 11A, this exhibit 11A or whatever we were, A11. Um, if we could have that, that would be, uh, that would be great. This has been, this is a very useful piece and I, and I don't see that in the information we have.
Okay. Okay, anything else from the board? So, just everybody on the call, I want to thank the, the residents for their participation. Um, you know, these are challenging in person, it's a little bit, a little bit more challenging to do these types of hearings remotely and.
You've done a remarkable job.
I'm almost down...
So, thank you very much for keeping it in order, and Norma, thank you for bearing with us.
Sure thing.
I burned up my iPad and I'm almost down to 10% of my...
Thanks, John, appreciate your help.
I hate to, I hate to add one more question, but this is about process. So, all of the residents today who appeared and were granted standing, are they the only ones who are allowed to continue forward with other witnesses? Or at our next hearing, could it be different, people asking to be for standing?
I suppose if there's someone else that wants to participate and seek party status, we would, we would take it up. You know, the right of the applicant or anybody else to object. I don't know that, that there would be an issue with that. I've seen people come into these hearings, as long as they come in before we're, you know, while we're in the beginning or the middle of it, as we, as we get further along, gets a little bit more problematic. We're not going to let anybody go back and ask witnesses that have already testified questions, but...
I just, I wanted to make that clear for the community.
Yeah.
There was anybody who was unable to be here, could they come now that it's gone into a multi-evening hearing?
Yes, they, they could. It probably won't make Mr. Brosman happy, but they could. So, again, they would have to meet, they'd have to live in close proximity and, and, you know, and state that on the record, but yes, that can happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Night, everyone.
Anything else?
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.